Whoever.
Yeah.
Excuse me if I don't stay up.
We are live, just in FYI. It's right here behind you.
Is that not your good side?
You want to switch sides?
Oh, my God.
Here, have mine.
No, you're fine.
No, because I can sit by the camera.
You don't want to get laid in the camera. You're fine.
But I'm not, don't need to be in the table.
Anybody else need an agenda?
Uh, sure.
I have a couple.
You go on the.
You need an agenda?
Well, on the, on the left side, calendar. And if I heard, have the meeting, click on the meeting, it takes you to the agenda. You turn the heat up, did you? We gotta get this, gotta get that piece on. It's just not, it's not. This is not. This is the old, this, this is the old part, right?
Yeah, this, this wall is, uh, in addition, it used to be.
This was my typing class.
Connected to the other room next door.
You got something, you have water? You see, you might want to get some water.
Okay, kind of attention, Mr. Woods is at the planning zoning meeting. Um, everybody signed in on the sheet?
I don't think we two have.
There's a sign in sheet going around the six oh seven. And we are live, as I understand. Why we're having the meeting tonight at the middle school is because some folks on this committee have asked to tour the middle school and the issues that we are having here. So that we can see for ourselves what needs, need to be fixed or replaced or whatever needs to. So thank you all for coming and getting the message of being here for the middle school tonight. I asked Jody Farnsworth, um, to give us the tour. Um, but first, on our agenda, we have an action item to select one additional, um, task force committee member. And I had recommended this be on the agenda on our last meeting, um, someone from the facility committee. Um, like, or Amanda can't make it one night, then we can have another person, probably Jody fill in or vice versa, because it's just good. Um, so.
On motion?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I made a motion to select, um, a task force committee member from. Facility. Facilities committee.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote.
Uh, I think I want to discuss this. And I'm opposed to this. And the reason is that we are, the committee is oversized now. And it's going to be changing, uh, at the end of this year. Jefferson and I, or I know I'm going off and I think Jefferson is too, at least with the motion. Um, I just, this is a, this is a different committee. Uh, it's got, it's got at least two people on it who were on the facilities committee. I think there needs to be a, a break. I think we need, we need eyeballs. And, uh, that, uh, yeah, anyway, that's my reasoning.
Well, I got a question. Can this committee select another person since the board did it? The board selected this committee.
True.
So this committee can select, keep selecting?
No.
Why not? If you do it once, what stops? You set a precedent.
With the R board, the Emmett School Board, I recommended last month, because we, we all were there last month, to have somebody from the facility committee be on, um, this committee. Not as a voting member, but as someone as like consultant, because they did put in a lot of time. And just like Amanda, when she was sitting at the table, she answered a lot of our questions that we had when it came to talking about the buildings.
Your motion didn't state. A non-voting.
What was that?
The motion didn't state non-voting.
Motion was just to have somebody on it.
That means if they're on it, they're voting.
Okay, can you redo your motion?
Yeah, I'll redo it.
Got a second, so you better. But my question is, you're setting precedent. So somebody else.
Not if we redo it. I'll, I'll make it.
No, yeah, you are, you're still, somebody else could be on the committee as a non-voting member.
Could, could I jump in real quick, just so that you have some background information? Um, we actually were appointed by the board to have the facilities committee. There was a meeting a year, over a year ago, to have this formed.
I was there.
And so we were, we were already appointed and, and asked to be a part of it. So, so I'm, I, I don't know that it's something that, you know, it needs to be super argued, but, because it's already been done once and this is yet again another, another committee, so.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Well, the only, the point I'd make is this is a separate, different commu- committee. It was, uh, I've got a motion in front of me that I actually put, put together and voted on. And it, it was voted as a, a building committee. I think we really need to get, we need to get to a place where we're not calling it the facility committee, because it's confusing.
It is confusing, and I don't know.
The, the, the motion read, uh, a, a building committee. And, and it gives purpose and all the things it's supposed to do with the members listed. And so I just, I don't know. I'm not going to get upset. I, you know, as soon as you vote, I'm done talking about this. But it seems to me like we're, we need to get to this business that we are appointed to do.
I, can I comment? I, just historically, from a timeline perspective, I think people, and I don't mean to speak for y'all who are on the facility committee, but an interconnectivity between the work the facility committee did, which we were all invited to be a part of, um, to our task force now, um, so that there's not this propensity to reinvent the wheel. I, I know a lot of argument going into this whole process has been lack of inclusion. So I fear that if we start putting up barriers now, we're just following suit with the complaint we all had going back a year or two ago, that we're not allowing more people at the table, you know? I mean, at the end of the day, it's the board who's voting, um, on how we're going to move forward.
One, one last thing. If we're designing this to make decisions, then continuing to grow a committee is not the way to do it.
Well, I think this is the.
And that's, uh, the problem we've got now is we've got bigger committee than is really, uh, well, it, it's a very large committee now. That's.
And we start, we initially, as the board, we talked about nominating two people. And because of that concern, we reduced it to one. So, I mean, we're still within the happy medium or the gray. I just don't want to be so abrasive to, you know, invested members of our community. We all equally are and, you know.
I, I, I appreciate that, but I haven't got enough time on this, this board to be patient.
Right.
And, and so I'm done being patient. That's, that's part of it. I apologize. That's the way it is. And my understanding of the committee was, at the end of the day, the non-board members of the committee were presenting to the board their recommendation of how we should proceed towards a bond. Not the board and the non-voting, and non-voting members. It's, it's separate, two separate entities here. And I kind of agree with Bill, is that we set up the framework to have each board member select a person, and that six group, member group, is the one that's going to bring forth to the board a recommendation on how we should proceed. We didn't say six plus, or seven, or eight, or 10. We said six. Plus, uh, Mr. Woods. And he's non-voting too. So we actually have six people that are voting and going to present to the, the board what their recommendation is. Now, we got input upfront with you folks, but at some date, I think that the board's going to have to step back, so you can make your deliberations and come up with a recommendation to us. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
And I hope. Uh, that's not what the motion is.
It's not.
And the motion was voted on, and it, and it's right there.
Yeah.
Read it, because it's.
Yeah, it's not.
Read it out loud.
Motion to establish and direct a building committee that was passed at the regular meeting of Emmett School District Trustees of October ninth, two thousand nineteen. Bill Hamilton moved to appoint a building committee for the purpose of exploring options to provide for the growth and education of Emmett School District students in a fiscally responsible way. And to present those options to the Board of Trustees on a regular basis with reports at least monthly at the regular meetings of the trustees. Options are to include growth forecasts and combinations of new buildings and repurposing of existing structures. Options should include costs for construction and continued maintenance. The committee will consist of one nominee of each trustee, the current trustee, and superintendent, carried unanimously. And then it lists committee members Ronnie Weeks, Clark Beer, William Hamilton, Tracy Walton, Robert Teeter, John Sonny, Jody Harris, Shannon Miller, Jefferson Jenkins, Brian Gregory, Terry Jones, Clint Ward.
So my question, the way I understand that, the board's part of the committee. Is that?
That's the way they put in the motion, correct?
That's the way I understand that, too. My other question, if anybody, we all should be bringing in, in fact, I got a couple people that we need to have consultants on the committee. One of them's, uh, it's kind of what he does, is this type of, where it looks at buildings and see what they need. The other has a heating and air conditioning, uh, big time company in Boise that's a friend of mine, wants to come through. They were, I asked him, I, he willingly, I mean, it's not something he'd love to do, he'd willingly do. That's the information we need. My other, I got, I got one question. Is this committee supposed to just rubber stamp? Is that what we're put here, just to rubber stamp this?
I would hope not.
Well, if we do, we're in trouble. Tell you that right now.
And I will tell you one thing, if the people that are sitting at this table take it upon themselves to make the decision for themselves, this is going to be a failure. If we do not listen to the community, this will be a failure. I need all of you to know that right now. It doesn't matter whether farm growers involved, city folk are involved, it will be a failure. We have to listen to the voice of the people of this community, good, bad, and indifferent.
But we got to give them the information to help them. That's our job. We got, we got to find out what it's going to cost. There's no cost in here that I could see. We got, it's got to be broken down.
Madam Chair, which to me is the biggest hang, and I know we're kind of going away from the initial thing of what the two task forces is, the composition of it, but until we know what land we're focused on, how much it's going to cost and the infrastructure of it, if we're going the way of building a new high school, I mean, to your point, all that has to be weighed out before the public in a very clear and concise way. I mean, we're seeing that with the fire bond, it's kind of things are putting our people right in the moment, rather than building up and building the education throughout the whole process. So, I mean, we, we're not even zeroed in on land yet, which is a huge obstacle.
I would, I would call for a question.
Well.
I got a question first. We have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
He's going to withdraw.
I got a question for Tracy. So how, how, if you want people to come in and consult to us, how would you like the motion read? If you want people to come in and consult to us?
Well, as a committee, we should have the opportu, we should be asking P professionals to come in just when we tour this building. We need professionals to come in.
And, but how do you want the motion to read?
Well, they can't vote.
No, one of these guys can't, aren't going to be able to vote either, when we, once we read it. Well, the point is, I, I don't know that we need motions to have people come in and talk to us.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The committee.
That's not necessary.
Oh, I got one more question before we go on. Are you the chairman of the committee?
Yes, she is, because it's, it's, it's a board meeting.
All right, but that should have been brought up at the last meeting.
Well, and it's the way they did the, the way they did the motion, by putting the entire board on there, it is a board work session.
Oh, I agree.
It's not a committee meeting.
I agree she should be. I'm not arguing.
Right, yeah, but that's what, that's, it was, and I guess it was just maybe it was automatically, because I had to call ISBA to double check, but because every member of the board is on it, she's as board chair is, because it's actually one of our board meetings, but we call it a work session because of the type of meeting.
Can I just say something? So, um, I want to tell you why I think it's important for somebody from the facilities team to be on this committee. As Jody said, the facilities committee was formed by the board, oh, a year and a half ago, and it was an open invitation for any and all of the community to be involved. I was involved since the very beginning. And there were a lot of people who were, and there were some people who came and went, and yeah, we had, there are some people on the committee that were involved, um, but they weren't able to attend to every meeting. Um, they weren't involved in a lot of the, like, the survey, the, all of the steps that we took to that, to the end. And so, um, let me just tell you the, how it appears to the community and to the, to the facilities committee, who spent over a year working so hard. So the way it stands now, with just the board choosing, the, every member of the board choosing somebody, it looks like the board is able to choose, hand-select somebody who's a twin of themselves, while not involving the outside community. It looks, very much appears that this is hand-selected by the board and not as much looking for input from the community. I am here as volunteer. You know, I know some of the people on the board by, by your name, by your face, but I am not close friends with anybody on the board. I am here entirely because I want to, because I believe, because I have kids in the district. I am here for the long haul, because I feel strongly about it. And that's the only reason I, I'm here. I don't have friends on the board. I'm just here because this is something I feel strongly about. If you want to have the community behind you, I think you do need to show that you have somebody who doesn't already have an in with the board, who is willing and able to work with you. I think it, you have to show that in order to, to give value to the work that has already been done. Honestly, at the last meeting, most of the stuff that was done was stuff that we had already handled in the facilities committee. And so I'm left thinking, okay, what are we doing? I'm not understanding what the end goal is here, because in my mind, we have already done this. And I am totally on board, I am totally, um, ready to help in whatever capacity, but I would like to know what the end goal is, and I would like to have some kind of show that the community and, um, the facilities committee is valued and has a place at the table.
Madam Chair. Um, I, 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 again, I haven't got time to be patient. The fact of the matter is, the facilities committee failed. And I'll give you an example of that. And, and I'll do it right now. In the, in the very first sentence of the mission statement. Says, um, what is the mission statement here? For the school? Hmm? For the school? No, for the facilities committee. The, the very first sentence was saying that you had, uh, oh, here it is. "We will create a bond proposal to be presented to the board that has encompassed diverse community feedback and compromise." I don't think you guys understood what a bond proposal is. A bond proposal has to have money involved, or it's not a bond.
But that was not our task. That's, that's.
Your mission statement is right here. I'm reading. "We will create a bond proposal." What was given to us was not a bond proposal.
But we checked every step of the way with the superintendent and everything. Okay, what does this, what do you want? We checked with the board, what do you want our proposal to look like? We did that every step of the way. So that is not our failure.
It's not mine neither.
If we, if we were not given clear instructions as to what you wanted. As far as the money, we looked at broad terms, but we were not equipped to make any decisions as far as the board in terms of the property and the estimates and getting all that. That's the board's job. We.
It is not the board's job. The bond proposal must have money in it, or it is not a bond. A bond requires money, time, interest rates, and, and those things.
I understand that, but we did not have the power to be able to speak those numbers, whereas the board or the superintendent does.
Madam Chair? Yeah, and, and obviously we have to get to a point here where we can move forward and get out of these leads, but, um, the superintendent, it's no secret, anyone in the room is watching, we made a change in leadership, and I don't know if you can speak to this, um, but, I mean, the previous superintendent had been tasked with pulling together some figures. Where that dropped off, I don't know. So we're in a new era of new leadership, and he's at the planning and zoning meeting, which is probably where he should be. Um, but I don't know if you can speak to any of that, but there was a.
Yeah, yeah, there was, there was an, there was an investigation of general terms and general numbers, but we were always reminded that we were, our task was to get a, a general idea of the direction that our community wanted to go in, and that's exactly what we did. Terry was with us along the way and gave input, and many others of you, you know, came and, came and went throughout the meetings. So although it wasn't, um, our mission or our task to put numbers, specific numbers to all of the projects, it was indeed to find out what would the, what would the community vote for. And then the next task, um, as I think I so roughly put it in one of our proposals, it would be tag your it. You guys get to go now do the hard work and heavy lifting and finding those numbers. And I, I assume that that's what this committee is, is intended to kind of, to do, is to, to bring in experts and to, and to, to add on to the work that has already been done and to, to put it down to fine terms of finances.
Yep.
And, and I'm, yeah.
I thought that's what this was for.
Yeah, I, I hope that that's what this is for. And, and quite frankly, I think the community, um, would, is expecting that too, you know, because there was a lot of input and, and a lot of like slow, tedious, baby steps over the last, um, over the last year. To make sure that people knew that we had meetings, could give a chance to give feedback in, in all kinds of ways, in surveys and in person. So, um, and this is, this, this proposal was sort of like phase one, and it appears that we are on to phase two, uh, coming together to get a bond put out there for the community to, to vote on.
Madam Chair, one last thing upon our references, I think at the, in, at the beginning of the day, we have to know what we expect out of people. I mean, with the previous, um, superintendent, there was some criticism out there that we didn't want that individual dictating the flow of what direction the recommendation or the committee went in. And now Craig, um, you know, he wants to be president for hands off, because he doesn't want that perception that he's dictating anything. So are we expecting as a board and/or a task force for our superintendent to track down available land, how much that land's going to be and all that? Are we expecting that out of ourselves to do that level of due diligence and get the experts in to give us advice, which no doubt we need? And, you know, I've tried to invite some of those people to come here too, like Josh Swanton and, um, Brian Solomon and stuff, but they just have not been available yet. Otherwise, we're going to just keep standing.
I think at this point, we have a motion on the table that we need to address, uh, before we can move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So are we going to exclude people or are we not? That's the motion. We need to vote.
Motion is to add, so we either need to change the motion or vote.
We've got a motion with a second, and I, I'd like to hear what the motion is.
I have to add a committee member from the facilities committee as my sketch. I go to the recording for the, but that's what I have.
I think that's, I agree.
And who, who was the second?
The second was Jenkins.
Or reword it if you want. But I want to. That's, that's the motion. That's the second. Let's vote on it. If I lose, I lose. I don't, you know, I'm good with that.
Well, he's willing to change. He's got to pull his second.
We gotta, we gotta get going on it. We can be amended, is what I'm saying. Or you can make another motion if it fails.
Needs to be amended before the vote.
Before we vote on it, yeah. That's why I'm asking right now, are we excluding or are we not?
First of all.
But that's what the vote is for.
First, first of all, I got a question. Is this a board vote or a committee vote?
It would be a board vote.
This would be a board vote.
It's a board vote.
Okay, well then, I don't even have a say in this.
You're off the hook.
So should we amend it, Mr. Hamilton? We should amend it first?
If you would like to amend it.
If you want to amend it.
If you want to vote, you can vote.
If this is the way you want the motion, then, then we can vote on it. I'll, I'll. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to add a previous facility committee's member to this now, what is it, what was it?
Building.
Building committee. The way it's been worded, yeah. With the ability to not vote with the, with the deciding vote. Okay, it was a vote.
No voting.
No voting, no voting power. Without voting privileges.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote. Ronnie?
Are we, is this, is this the amendment? Has, has amendment been changed to this, or are we amending the amendment? That's my, I mean, are we amending the main motion, or is this the main motion? This is, you're voting on the.
The amendment of the motion, yes.
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment.
So we're, we.
So roll call vote. Ronnie?
I'm saying.
Mr. Hamilton?
No.
Mr. Teeter?
Nay.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Aye.
So no, and we got a tie vote?
Accept. So we're going to call it county commissioner?
Well, you actually have an, we, we do have a policy on that regarding that, that we can.
And that was actually illegal right now, because the title on that policy is no longer the committee person.
Chairman of the county commissioners have to break the tie.
And that is Mr. Elliott?
Yeah. We do have, we, we've got an opportunity for anyone who wants to change the vote, to can do that.
And if not, we can just move forward and see what they want.
Oh, we're, we're voting on this amendment. Right. All right. I'll change my vote to yes, to get to, to the, uh, original motion. So the motion as amended would now read what?
Weeks request, okay, so to add a facility committee member to the building committee with no voting ability.
That's straightforward. Sounds like a compromise.
Would you like to make that motion?
Well, that motion's on the floor.
Okay, is there a second?
It, it has been seconded. It's been voted on. It was, the, the motion was, was made and seconded.
You guys are confusing.
I know, they're confusing me too. So we're saying this passed.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, there was a motion made and seconded.
Right.
There was an amendment made and seconded by Ron, which passed.
Right.
Which means we now move on the main motion as amended.
So I mean, I'm running out of paper. Okay, main motion. Um, so we're going to do roll call again then? Are we just going to vote? We don't need to do.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote. Ronnie?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Nay.
Mr. Teeter?
Nay.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Aye.
So now you're going to tie vote. So now you can call them.
Okay, so we're calling him on which one?
Well, it's either the main, the main one is amended.
The main one is amended, so the one, the voting ability motion. So the first one was to amend, and that one passed, and then the motion to add, I'll say that, add, okay, and I will listen to that, I'm sure. Okay, so I need to call, tie vote, got it. I think it's been a long time since we've had a tie. Okay, go ahead.
Yep.
Let's go to the next section.
We're out of the action items. Okay, informational discussion items.
Well, aren't, aren't we going to take a tour?
Yes, that's first.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that's, that's underneath your tour of facilities.
And I'm going to take this around.
Actually, I think, I think they will go to that building in the back, because that's where the building is.
Yeah, I would try to check the little building. You'll need a jacket.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to pause the lights to forget about the building.
Go, boy.
Hello? Yeah. Yeah.
Thoughts since our last meeting?
Lots to take in.
Let's go ahead Tracy. I was gonna say, I think it's probably what Tracy's gonna say is we need to get some people in here to give us some numbers and give us some opinions. So we know what kind of decisions to make. Cause at this juncture, we're kind of spinning our wheels. We've got the facilities committee's recommendation. We've looked at things. We still don't know what it's gonna cost for anything.
Yeah, that's my opinion. To me, this is the elephant in the room is this school here. You gotta make a decision what you're gonna do. Is this school worth saving and fixing? The boiler room and that room we know is not worth. It's gotta go. So you gotta decide. And we're not too professional to do it. We can get them easy. They'll do it.
That's one cost factor we need. We need the cost factor of a new school. We need a cost factor of an older school. Or whatever we decide. I'm not sure what's happening up there yet. What it's gonna cost us to get the fifth grade out of this school and back to where it belongs.
Thank you.
Maybe the superintendent has some ideas on how to get all these things put together.
All right. Have you had anything else? Have you got it yet, have we? Just stick one or pass those around. That should be for your notebook. Just some quick cost factors to let you get these for ya. Should be 15 copies. Are we missing one? Clay, do you need one?
I need one, yeah. They might have one.
So here's some costs that I was able to gather through a couple of construction firms. Tracy brought up the fact that down in the Magic Valley, the cost might be a little cheaper. So I called down to Twin Falls, talked to actually their building director. They built a brand new middle school in 2014. Their cost was $31 million for that middle school. It's got a capacity of about 1100 students, has 130,000 square feet. Land purchase was part of the project, so that was part of the cost. But their per square footage was about $237 per square footage. That includes everything, the football facilities that they have and all that. So when you look at those costs, that includes equipping the building with desks and everything like that. They put an amount of money in there. So that was, and that was set on 30 acres. So that's the size of land that they had to value. The Valleyview Middle School had to be built. The capacity, that's gonna be about 1,400. Square footage is gonna be 181,000. Their January 2020 bid is when they, so their bids are just getting ready to go out. So we'll have some hard numbers on what the construction costs are in the valley. That one's setting on 60 acres, but it's gonna be a dual. They're gonna have not only a middle school, eventually they'll put an elementary out there with it. So that's why it's so big. They said, you know, that's construction wise, they say it's about 30 acres for a middle school is what you need. 50 to 60 acres is what a high school sits on with all your facilities. Then you have the Middleton High School, which was built in 2009, which is an older one. I said, I just wanna show them what it was. Total cost was 40 million. The capacity, they didn't have their number on capacity, but their square footage is right at 250,000 square feet, included CTE buildings. You know the facility if you've ever been to Milton. It's kind of one of the gems. It was built at the perfect time, okay? It was a perfect storm as to how they got that one so cheap. Well, they bonded, they bonded at 50 million for that school. They actually thought they were gonna spend 50 million, but it hit right in 2009, which is at the recession. So they were, builders were just begging for work. And so they ended up getting it a lot cheaper than what they actually thought. It's built on 60 acres. Then you have the Ridgeview High School, which is a Valleyview School District, which was built in 2014. Cost of that was 48 million. Capacity, again, I don't know their capacity by actual students. Square footage was 257,000. I believe they're built at about 1,400 students per building, but I didn't wanna put it down if I didn't know exactly the number.
I think they, I swear to you, but they built to grow. And I think, I think they opened it around 14, but I think they have capacity for like 16 or...
Middleton or Valleyview?
Uh, Ridgeview.
Oh, Ridgeview, well, yeah. I know Middleton was built at 1,100. And then I know they built on to go to 14, I believe.
What do you recommend for capacity agreement?
I think if I was gonna build a high school, I would build for at least a thousand, but I would add, that would be your base bid. And then I would have add alternates to add more classrooms, because adding more classrooms are cheaper at that time. So you, let's say you build for a thousand, and you have an add alternate for another 400. And then if the bids come in at a reasonable price, you add that in.
Same for a middle school?
Middle school, if you're gonna run four grades, you're gonna go six, seven, eight. Or if it's three grades, you're probably close to 800, 700, 800. Middle school, if you're gonna run four grades, you're gonna go six, seven, eight, or if it's three grades, you'd probably close to eight hundred, seven, eight hundred, so.
On Ridgeview, does this include the land?
Which one?
Ridgeview.
Ridgeview, I, yes, they had, they had land in that one as well, and they had some, they had to bring water sewer管ways on that one. It's on sixty-five acres, and then the Y T is the new West Data school, the total cost for that is forty million. Capacity is gonna be about the same, it's gonna, you know, I think it's gonna be about fifteen hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, and they're estimating the cost. And that's because they don't, that's the hard cost, is between two fifty, two seventy-five. And because it's, it's gonna be a larger school, but it's on sixty plus acres.
Why, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what was the capacity on that, do you know?
I didn't know it exactly. That's the new school they're building, I'm assuming their building's about eighteen hundred.
That's not Y T, it's pretty, it's gonna be about a two thousand.
Eighteen hundred to two thousand, which is probably gonna come in at.
Yeah, it's a Y T, but it's in West Data.
Yeah.
So could a new building be built right behind this facility? On, on, on this amount of acreage?
This acreage, and I'd have, what's our acreage here?
Thirteen, what, thirteen?
I know it's small, but, I mean, could you build a eight hundred capacity building right on this campus? And then when it was all done, tear all this down, except for like excluding the gym and auditorium. If a guy was to read, you know, however you would do that, to fix that and tie it into the, the new school.
You could, you'd do just about anything, I mean, you'd have to look at your two-story side.
I didn't know if the state would, you know, can you do that? Could they do that? Cause you already have the property here.
Right.
You know, just something to look at.
Could you lose your football field probably in the?
Why?
We're gonna build.
Right behind it, like we're starting where the boiler room is and the whole grass.
There, now I guess you could do that.
And then you could make this parking, cause the parking in this place is ridiculous as it is.
You gotta keep the new section of this building and the new section of the lunchroom by the?
Why would you have to keep the new section?
The elevator, the cost that we put into it.
You almost have to cut your off.
Since, got a question. How much room does Black Canyon, how many square feet do they need?
How many square feet do they, that's a good question. I mean, they, right now, they're using half of you, could they, could they, could they, could they shorten it up? Absolutely. Could they, yeah, what, what does this section of the building have? One, two, three, six, six classrooms just on this section? You could probably put Black Canyon in this, this section of the building.
How many kids are there, you know?
Eighty kids, eighty, I mean, but you're gonna, but again, we're gonna be looking at also, alternative school possibly all the way down to junior high, so. I would, I would probably look at an alternative program between, you know, seventy to ninety kids, is what you're gonna need.
Yeah, well, you got ninety-nine in Black Canyon right now.
And you mentioned last meeting, converting half of you, you was back in to take some pressure on Carberry.
We were talking about that, that's gonna be something we presented the board, no matter what, for next year.
Because I sat in there looking at that, like I, I know a lot of the guys in the construction business, and with all the houses going right around Carberry, it's gonna make it overwhelming there, you know, and, and the more I thought about that, I was like, you know, that is a good idea. You know, and you'd probably, you'd have to add a gym there, wouldn't you, probably for them?
And I think the facilities committee did some rough estimates, you're not gonna get a hard number for a building until you take it to bid. You're gonna get, hey, your, your average square footage, that's what I get from Benefiton Construction, is one of the companies I've used, another great one is C M. And I can call, I can reach out to them, C M Construction is a lot, E S I does it a different way. But they're another one that's really building in the Treasure Valley, but they're gonna tell you about the same thing, if you have land, you're gonna be somewhere, if, if you don't have a land, you're gonna be somewhere between two seventy-five and three hundred to, to build a new high school, per, per square foot. That'd be your entire facility, that'd be putting everything in it, if you're looking at, you've got the piece of land, you're gonna be about two hundred fifty dollars a square foot, is what they said. Is what the Treasure Valley's pushing out right now. So then you look at, okay, what do you need, and I didn't wanna bring that in, I've got a, the new Valleyview Middle School is being built. Is capacity of fourteen hundred, it have an auditorium, it has two gyms, it has a lot of things in it, that's actually would be a good high school or junior high, you could actually, and you take that building, you kinda, okay, we don't need these two sections, so there's ways you can take those things, I didn't bring that yet, cause I wanted you to think about what is our priority? If this is our building, is our number one priority, then how are we gonna fix it? Do we wanna, do we wanna move everybody out of it, and put it, like we talked about, and build a new high school? Or you wanna build a new junior high, so I think that's what the facility has to make sure, this community's gotta make sure they go, okay, our priority is this, this, and this. How much can we get for the money? Does that make sense? Ron, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, it was, it was kinda brought up a little bit earlier, that the facilities committee kinda felt like grabbing a hold of some of these estimates. But it looks like, these were kinda some of the things that we grabbed a hold of, cause you just said, we can't get real solid estimates until we go. You're exactly right, you won't know.
Have something to.
You have a, so when, when you sit down with a design team and you, and you design this building, let's say you designed a brand new junior high. The design team puts it together, they're gonna give it to the construction company, C M, they're gonna tell you, this is what we estimate the cost is gonna be to build this building. You know, now, a lot of them will say, how much money do you have to spend and what do you really truly want? You have twenty-five million to spend, this is what we can get you for twenty-five million. Let's say they come out, they're gonna give you a pretty good estimate, I'll, I'll give you an example, notice. When we built, when we did ours, we had five million dollars to spend. And so we built, we designed for five million, but we also designed, we wanted three hundred students, we wanted capacity for three hundred, even though it only had two hundred in the building. What we did is we, we built it, our general bid was for two hundred students, and we had add alternates for an additional four class, five, six classrooms. So when the bid came in, and we had add alternates for bleachers in the elementary, in the gym and other little things out there, playground equipment for the elementary, cause it was an elementary building. When they, when the bid came in, we ended up only, we had about four hundred thousand dollars to spend, so our number one priority of our add alternates, add the, the, the square footage. So we added the square footage, we didn't put in L E D lights, we didn't put in the bleachers, we didn't put in the playground, cause we couldn't afford it, we'd have been over budget. And so that's how you, they have that, the board kinda made that decision, does that make sense? But, cause you, you'd never know what that, they're gonna give you a pretty good number, they're gonna say it should cost about four point six for that five million dollar building. It came in four point seven, so we knew we couldn't get it all, so we had to do that, we had to make sure we had it that way. So that kinda makes sense, you won't, I mean, they're not gonna come in and tell you we're gonna build your building for seventy million dollars, here it is, you know, unless you get a company that says, that's what they're gonna do. And the other thing that we talked about is exactly what that brought up there, we talked about removing the fifty-two section. And remodeling the seventy-two section for Black Canyon and, and district offices. So we talked about trying to keep the investment of some of the things that we put in already, and take down the portions of the building that we, we might not need anymore, but also to get the junior high, get it as that should be an elementary school, like you mentioned already, in, I mean, in the last meeting. We have elementary school kids growing, I mean, that, that group of kids is, is, is growing, so we need some more elementary school space, as those houses continue to, to go up. And create more square footage for middle school and high school. And, yeah, a lot of those things have been, have been discussed.
Yeah, I think what Clint was saying is, build the new middle school, or whatever school it is, by tearing down the oldest section of this building. And using the two newer sections, if I understood.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, even, I don't know, sometime, I mean, I was thinking more, tear down the boiler room, build a whole dang new school here that ties into the auditorium.
Right.
And, and, I mean, they're gonna lose some, tearing down a gym in this town, cause we're so short of them anyways.
We just put a roof on it, by the way.
Yeah. And it might cost you more to save that chunk down here and try to tie into it than it's worth, I don't know.
To do an L shape into that, into the boiler room and?
I don't know.
There you go.
Until, until. Yeah.
Tell you what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, sometimes, it might cost you a million dollars to save the thing and just tear it down and build a new piece, I, I don't know.
Once you start tying into this building, though, you're gonna have to think about upgrades of the entire building, cause then, once you get to that, and I, that's why I called that on the exact same question, is what happens in the remodel phase? How much, is there a trigger point where if you do twenty percent remodel, that, now you have to do everything A D A wise? And, and it's part of us to deal with your own, with our own fire service, but, but the explanation was like, if we were to just remodel, or, you know, redo the kitchen, that doesn't mean we have to do anything here, but if we reconfigured the kitchen and the cafeteria, and they say, we wanna put classrooms in there, and add in the cafeteria, then, then it ties into the rest of the building, anytime you reconfigure a building, is when you start to look at your A D A, fire suppression and all that, which would be the, the big expense in this building. And then if you tied onto this building and made it an L shape or something like that, now is that gonna lead into, now everything has to be upgraded. And a certain percentage has to go to your A D A and handicap anyway. I, I will say that Clark, Clark's right, this, the facility group did a great job, the numbers that I'm getting are just updated numbers. Everything that I'm getting is exactly what the facility crew already went through once. They said, hey, this is what your, you know, a new, a new gym is gonna cost you about, I think they put in there about three million dollars at the, and that's kinda what you're running, per square footage if you look at it. So I don't, I think that facilities team did a good job of, of doing that portion of it. And I think what they also did, they said, what, what is the commu, what is this community gonna accept? Because ultimately, you guys have to make a decision of what you think is good for this district, but also, what is this community gonna approve? And, and, and sometimes you gotta take a shot, saying, you know what, we, they may not approve it, but this is what we feel is the best for this community, for this, for this district. You know, and you may say, hey, it may be a sixty million dollar building. But, and then, then it's up to the voters, you've done your part, you said, hey, this is what we think we need to do, and then it becomes, then it becomes, let's see what the voters say. And last time you did it, what was the outcome? You tried to do a remodel on this building, it was a forty percent?
Forty percent, yeah.
On a remodel. On a remodel of the building, because they wanted something. And I hate to be bringing it up, because we've talked about the same before in another meeting, but I know this is, this is different, it's just the information. We're, we're on thirteen acres here. Where the high school is on thirty acres, so if we look at the updated sheets that you gave to us, those middle schools on thirty acres. Thirteen just seems awfully small for updated facilities and potential of growth, thirteen.
But we can't forget the, the gym and the auditorium is all we have. And that's a big thing we need in this district, we can't get rid of it.
I want more of that space. Well, I think, I think Mr. Jones has said this a few times, we need breathing room, you know, room to breathe, when we talked about different buildings, and the idea is if to try to, to do exactly what we say, we could, you know, to piece it together, put another building out back and do that, this one way you can do it. But if you build a brand new building, whether it be a junior high or a high school, now you got your breathing, cause this, I don't think you tear this building down. I think then you look at how, what can this building be used for, portions of it or whatever, cause then you can remodel section by section. Because you can't do it while the kids are in it, that's the issue you're on to.
What, what's the capacity of the, the high school now?
Seven eighty, I think is what it says.
That's its current capacity?
Yeah, seven eighty-five is right, that's what you got on the.
It's not far from that. No, we're not, we're seven sixty-nine.
So I gotta put my two cents worth in, I already told Tracy this. Sitting on this board, I, as a patron of this community, I cannot pass off on anything again that we cannot add on to. Whatever it is, junior high, high school, and I won't. If it's not designed and implemented so that it can be added on to for future growth, I'm not at all interested in it. I've watched all these other districts do it, I mean, Payette tried to pass a bond to it, and that's what I'm afraid we're gonna become. Is Payette, I mean, that poor community, if anybody deserves a new school, is Payette. And they couldn't even get somebody, and they couldn't pass a bond to, to add on to it and build on to it. And I, I don't want, but if we can't add on to it, I'm not interested in it, whatever the design be, junior high, high school, grade school, not interested.
You know, we're sitting here, doing a lot of talking, and it's valuable, I, I'm, I'm learning, I'm just listening. But we've got to come up with a Plan A and a Plan B, so that our administrator can get the numbers together. You know, we've got to, to put this puzzle on, on the table and say, we're gonna, this here, we need that there, we need, whatever it is we're gonna do. We've gotta get this on the table, so he can get some hard numbers, so we can start moving forward, because we can sit here and, and banny about adding to this building, or upgrading that building, building new, whatever. I, I think we've got to say, all right, maybe put papers on the wall, a new high school, how many of us want a new high school? How many of us wanna upgrade the, the, the old high school? What, whatever it is, I think we need to come up with a plan as soon as we can, and, and let Mr. Woods start putting a pencil to it, so, is that a forty billion dollar plan, is it a fifty billion dollar?
We're gonna write on the board back here for ya, we've got markers, and well, you've got your sheet first.
Did we hand out some sheets already? You should have a sheet in front of your priority grading sheet, this is what I, if you don't mind, I don't wanna interrupt this.
Yeah, I, the problem with that, I don't, I'll bet you never bought a car without finding out what it was gonna cost.
That's what we're trying to find out.
Okay, so I tell you, I ask you, do you want a new car? No price involved, you're gonna say, yes, you want a new high school, yes. The only way we're gonna figure out whether this is a viable option, is to get the price taken.
That's right, and that's what I feel, we, we got a Plan A, all right, price is too high.
See, I get, what I'm saying is, I'm not so concerned about what you could want, is what can they afford and what?
That's what I'm trying to get to, Bill. So, how, how do we get to where we know what the numbers are? Cause we don't have a plan of A, B, C, D together, or A and Q and B and F together, whatever it is. We've gotta come up with, so that he can get some numbers.
Does everyone have their sheet?
Yeah, so this is what I, you know, so you should have a couple sheets in front of you, I did the building conditions, well, I didn't do this, Andy did this for me, so do you need it all?
I just gave her all of them, I think.
So you should have a building conditions comparison form, that was all of the, that's all of our ratings from two thousand thirteen of each building, but they're all on one page. They tell you, the exterior conditions, yellow means it's fair condition, green means it's a good condition, they have nothing in excellent condition. Blue is when we're in poor, red is when we're unsatisfactory by building in each of those areas. So that's something for you to look at, the second one is suitability of space problems, which is the same thing, you look at each of the buildings, it tells you if, if we have suitable insufficient lab for that grade level, or for that, that building, it gives you a yes, not applicable all the way down through that. What I would like you to do individually, just take a couple minutes to look at the third sheet, which is this priority grading sheet. Put your name on it, say, hey, Mike, and this is you based on what you think is best for this community and for this school, and go what, what is, is the high school priority? You know, and what would be that, would it be, I want that as my number one, I want a brand new high school, and any comments you have there. If it's, nope, keep it the way it is, then that, you need to put that as your number six priority, your bottom priority. So you're gonna prioritize each of the buildings, so you should have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you should have one through seven somewhere on that list. Okay, on that, in that little square. Then I just put those out there and say, I think we should go new, I think we should rebuild, so if your number one priority is, let's take this middle school and let's rebuild it. Then put that down and write down what you got, this is you, based on what the information you've looked at, everything you've got, people you've talked to. You know, that go, okay, this is what's best for this community. And then hopefully, we're, then we'll sit down and figure out if as a large group, we've, we've got some ideas that, that meet up, does that make sense?
It's fine, except are, are we, do we know that we cannot fix this school?
Any building can be fixed.
No, I mean, no, do we know we can't fix it as, as far as price versus a new one? Do we, what, what do we know there? I'm saying we need to know that.
But, okay, so I'll say this, you ran a bond, what, a year ago, for twenty million dollars to fix this school. We know this community said absolutely not, forty percent said no.
But that, that twenty million dollars was not for this school.
Just for this school.
Thirteen, thirteen.
We had a big chunk going into high school.
There was a whole bunch of stuff in there.
I, I would like to see that difference, you know, can you fix it for fifteen million versus a new one, is it thirty, you know, what's that number? I don't know.
So, so I agree, it's gonna cost you thirty million, forty million dollars for a brand new school, or no matter what you do, and I'm not, and, but I'm just, here's the issue, is how are you gonna fix it with kids in? And that, and that's exactly what we talked about, even, you know, if we were trying to build next to the domes, just sort of build a new high school that, next to the domes, and we move the high school into there, still isn't fix this problem. So then you got both problems. Does that make sense?
Well, if you did that, say you built the high school over there, then you have to get the dome, you move this school into the domes, and so you can get this one repaired. You know, there's, there's a way to.
You don't have the facilities, over thirty-two square, thirty-two acres and football fields, all that, you, it could be done, but I'm telling, football can be difficult. To do that, cause you'd have your junior high and your high school, you'd be acting double shift, almost like you're, when you had the high school.
We don't do a double shift.
Not a double shift, but you'd be kinda that same thing, trying to hopefully use the same facilities. Not a double shift, but you'd be kinda that same thing, trying to use the same facilities.
When you, you, the problem is, is using the facilities.
Well, if you got the new school, then you empty out the, the, the old school. So you got old, you got, well, the north dome would be empty, so you can move this group into that, until you can take care of whatever you're gonna do with this. It's a lot easier to work with a, a facility that's empty.
So I guess what I'm asking you to do on this, and I get it, is based on what the conditions of the buildings are, where are our priorities? Not what does it cost us, because then, then, then we go, okay, a high school may not be within our reach. I guess, you know, maybe something we go, there's no way. Based on what our priorities are, what is it? You know, you know, and then, you're right, it could be, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to know what rebuild would be. But, you know, and you put that as a comment, I think we should be rebuilding the junior high, you know, not that we can get all the cost. Cause your job is really to kinda say, here's our prioritized list, we're gonna recommend to the board to go, hey, we need a, we need a levy for sixty million dollars, and we need a levy for fifty million dollars to fix and say that. And Tracy, you're right, you said it, I mean, one, one time, sixty million dollars would be hard, it'd be hard to swallow in this community. I guarantee it would be hard.
Got another question. What's uh, you have new and rebuild. I'm trying to put a difference in upgrade.
Yeah, you just rebuild, upgrade, whatever you wanna do. I just want-
No, 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 I wanna know the difference between rebuild, if I'm rebuilding a, this here building, basically it's new, in my opinion.
I'm talking building a new building, rebuilding what we currently have, so remodeling what we currently have.
What's, what's, what's an upgrade then?
Adding new electrical, I mean, infrastructure.
Let's say, let's say, oh, I, I see what you're saying. I was looking at that as, let's say, um, an upgrade to the high school domes right now, if you wanna put a new office front, in the front of that, you know, so that'd be an upgrade to it, or add another gym, or, or do something like that. At the high school, this is, my number one priority is um, the, the middle school. But my number two is to maybe the high school, and it's an upgrade that we want another gym put on that. That would be something I'd put in.
Okay.
That's what I'm, I get it.
I just, I wanna-
Yeah, no, that's good. Or the view view. We wanna, we wanna, we want an upgrade by putting a gym on it. That would be a good example of that. I was just trying to figure out a way where you could put some stuff down and go, where are we at? Are we close on some things?
Yeah, I do. I don't have one.
Do you need a pan?
Yeah, I've got pans.
Just taking-
Where's Shadow View? Shadow View's the one-
Out on the bench?
It's just like Carberry, looks identical to Carberry, it's out on the Idaho Boulevard, Fourth Street.
I've got a picture, but I just wanted to know where it is.
It looks just like it, but Carberry, and it's built at the same time.
I was on that committee.
We did a good job.
We negotiated with them. We told them they couldn't double us on the architect fees.
Yeah.
We also negotiated with the natural gas company and says, you will pipe natural gas out there and we'll put this other school on natural gas too. Yes. They were supposed to be-
It looks like they could be winging it or something.
No, they're supposed to be able to add on to each ring. We built that, and that was supposed to be part of the deal.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, Tracy was on the, the committee for the bonds on the elementary schools.
Right.
And they said both of those were designed to add on to.
They were supposed to have been, so they could add.
Oh, you can add on to.
Yeah.
The wiring is supposed to be there, they could just put right on and keep-
So that's kinda what happens in a general, um, that's exactly what I was talking about with the additional classrooms. That's the nice thing about it. So when you do your, your base bid and you add, you have a thousand, uh, and you want an add alternate for another twelve hundred, typically your base bid's gonna have your stubs for all your electrical, your water, your sewer, it's all there. So they ac- actually, you know, most of the time those add alternates, you, you may pay two, two hundred fifty dollars a square foot for your building, facility, and then the add alternate may be at eighty or ninety dollars a square foot, because it's, ninety percent of it's already there, just adding it. So that's why we, when we did it, we added as much building as we could get.
But these are made to, to add the building on later too.
Yes, yeah.
Like another four classrooms or something.
Yeah, that, which is gonna happen. I mean, I, I think that subdivision out there on Twelfth Street um is gonna be approved. You know, so that's two hundred forty-two homes.
Over how many years?
Seven. They think they'll be full, they, they'll have it in the next seven years. Just in that subdivision.
But they haven't filled the one next to it.
Uh, the one they just added, they just added two phases to it. They add another ninety homes going in there.
But it's, it's just not, it's not full yet.
No, it's their building.
I know their building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's been out there.
One builder, one builder has got that tied up though, and he's not very good to work with. Yeah, one guy owns all that. The one on Main, you were talking about.
The one off of, uh, right across from Carberry, kinda in there.
Yeah, same one.
Same one?
Yeah, same one. You have to, yeah, he's gotta build your house and it's a screwy deal.
It's been a long time getting finished out there. I wanna get to where we see what we all want. I wanna move forward. I want some, I want to start getting some numbers.
You ready to go? We'll start with you then.
And put yours up there first, man. Yeah, I don't care. I'm ready to go.
You want me to do it, or you wanna do it?
Guys, I would caution that as you put your own personal opinions out there, that you do consider the year-long work that came before this. Because we surveyed the community and they shared what they wanted. So keep in mind not only what you want, but also what will pass. And we were shown by our last vote that, that not enough was not good enough. The community spoke loudly on that one. So consider that, just as you want.
The Patriot Center, is that uh, really come under the school district or not?
Yes, it is.
It's not private enterprise?
Not the building though.
Right?
No, the building's yours, isn't it?
Okay.
Sometimes they feel like the, you know, the ones that-
Actually, we have teachers over there.
So it's a private enterprise, but it's under the, self-supporting, under the school district? Okay, doing the teaching.
Looks about right.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Very, I'm not sure.
No. I'll, go ahead. I want you to get confused.
Angie might be able to come help me at tally too, if we got too many people ready. I'm just writing what they, each line, see they have what it's written on.
Were they prioritized?
That's what it is, so just put what you're gonna move, that, that one. So Jefferson, did you want a new or a rebuild?
I'm here. You want a new high school and a rebuild? Wait a minute, you got two, you have to redo that.
One separate.
And it's gonna be a rebuild. We just talked about it.
So you're putting a number four here, right?
We're gonna bring the U S.
Yep.
To get the fifth grade out of the middle school.
Okay. Okay, who's next? Anybody else ready? Number five for what? What do you want, Shadow View? And Carberry.
Well, Shadow View, Carberry are-
Five, six, do you want just upgrades? Maintain?
Maintain only. It wasn't anything that needs to be done.
We'll just write that here.
I don't know how things are.
And it's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, but anything else is- I don't know.
Um, it's more grounds. I would, I would do some work out on the grounds, get a new playground, I think, and some of those types of things that are, that are, that are nice to have. But not, apparently there's thirty-five students in, in there. Suite Montour's thirty, yeah, it's only, if we, if we add, if we add, um, I think if we, cause if we add in, no, it's more than that, we're almost fifty. If we add in the, if we add a Ola, we need to set up a thing for the next year. Yeah, what's our number? We have one fifty classroom, that's not the one that's got it.
So Craig, we've got a couple instances here where they put number one and they want new and upgrades.
I think the biggest, the biggest thing is, what's our biggest priority? If the, if the high school's a priority, then that's the biggest thing. And we're files, as far as, they will discuss it as a group and figure out what we want. Um, so that, yeah, cause I think there's twenty-five or fifty there, cause if we add in the twenty-six from Ola, then maybe it's seventy, which it'll hold. You're right.
Yeah, I'll just, I add the numbers here.
I added my two.
I hear it here somewhere.
There's eighty capacity total.
Ten forty-four.
The high school.
Okay.
High school, wow.
Either rebuilt or new, but unfortunately the cost is about the same. You know, it's the smallest project at the moment.
Yeah, and I'm total. Is it even worse, say?
They're, they're good, they're good. If you have another building, and if we use this building, none of the communities will be on, if it's gonna stay, except for that one, you can do little by little, there's some, they talked about just the facilities. So I'm sure if it, if it all, save everything on that, and move through this building, you're putting, um, heating, air conditioning, and, you know, classroom, you know, do some upgrades in your insulation, things like that. While there's nobody in, I think that would be the best by the way to say, you're right, the boiler, that really makes it good.
Yes.
That's gotta go. I think that would be the best, that is, I'm talking the old boiler, that whole, the old industrial arms, that section just- Right, so then I, I, let me see what I have, even numbers like that.
Just kinda rough stuff.
Yeah.
From what I've been involved with remodels, along the network goes, it's a remodel, it is so much stuff, they usually cost more than what I've done this to carry out a rebuild.
You're right. And that's, well, that's what we looked at with the, the fix. As much as they would have, and it would be a nice, you know, once it's fixed up.
I just wanted to watch these whole.
Yeah, no, I agree, and that's good, because honestly, you guys, you two names, community, what's gonna pass and what's not. I don't, this has gotta be, you think we asked them, saying, hey, I'd like to get behind this and, and say, it's not the best, you know, it's, it's good for the kids, it'd be, you know, good bike.
Sixty million to ninety thousand.
Over the what?
It was twenty years, ninety thousand.
Yeah, that is.
Mine's six figures, two years, three years.
Can I ask how many acres you have?
I don't know.
Cause I, cause I, you know, we've, we've been in that email, and so I have that updated number, I got that all packed in.
Or they, you wanna show it, say two months.
What's the? So what do you figure sixty million would cost for um?
Anybody else? Everybody else got theirs then?
Find out, that figure. So all yours is, um, what is it, the, the most expensive, that aggregated, aggregated, ag-
Prime year.
There's four different things.
That's excessive.
Well, you, well, you don't get it, right?
The excessive.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's production value, it's not, it's production value, that's awesome. But it's, it's valued by production value.
Yeah.
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 We've been in there, we're in there every year. And they sent you.
No, no, I just took it apart and should get back together. It's not fair to pick on me. I'm, I'm an old man, you can't pick on me.
Well, yeah, that's alright. I, I know, I, I deserve the case.
Make sure we're all on the same page. It looks like everybody's up here. So the high school, high school's got most, this is a new high school, one's got it as a five, rebuild is a three, upgrades four. And that could be because the, hey, my number one priority is a, a middle school, and I want upgrades over here. So I mean, that's, just gives us some numbers to look at, but a big, big percentage likes the idea of a new middle school. View view, I'm high school. View view, we're looking at rebuilds and or upgrades, right? That's kinda what we're looking at. Middle school is kinda, hey, we either build a new one or rebuild, cause it's a feasibility, I get it, that twos and threes, upgrades are needed, we know that, right? Shadow view is just upgrades, what upgrades they need as they go through time. So the way I look at that is, is that we build, as I work with the board to build out a ten-year plan, cause we, we need a ten-year maintenance plan, maybe twenty, but it says, these become priorities within that building. What are those upgrades that we need within that building? Same thing with Carberry, because there are two need, but we need maintenance, and I agree, we're twenty years on each of the rows, we're gonna have to have them in the plan, re-roof those buildings and get them into the cycle. And then suite, again, upgrades, because we just put a new, um, roof on it, but there's upgrades and maintenance, it's not a high priority. Ola, either new and or rebuild on this one are some of the priorities. We got a number one. Rebuild would be to take the old building, fix it, take the half a million that it looks like it's gonna cost. New would be to put a new building up there at that spot. So that, that makes sense? Is that kinda where we're at?
Yep.
And again, what I, what I wanna do with this, over time, as the committee puts this together, is like on these buildings, if we say upgrades, this becomes part of maybe our five-year plan, because we can't get it all into that bond budget. You know, if our number one group, if this facility team says, build a new high school, and we, we earmark fifty-five million for a new high school, what else can we get done with, you know, on sixty million, let's say, or, you know, say, I know throwing that number out there, sixty million, can we get this priority, this priority, some of these upgrades done within this building? That's kinda the way I wanna kinda build it out, right? So now it's time to talk about, as a group, you got an idea, what are the pros and cons, okay? And this, cause you, like I've said many times, this committee's making a decision that would say, hey, we think if we put this thing together this way, this community will buy into this and take it on, you know? And then it's up to the, you're just kinda putting it out there saying, hey, we, we, we kinda support, we support this, now it's up to, up to the community and the community to say, okay, we'll go after it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just looking at what we've got up there, it just looks like we've got the high school, view, view, middle school, and Ola, are our priority schools.
And that's probably, we've known that all along.
We've known that all along, we just didn't need to know cost factors, and you've kinda given us an idea what a high school would cost. We need to know what it would cost to remodel the middle school, and you're saying, somebody said it was thirteen million on the last bond. I don't know what they included in that, whether that was a whole, what we have envisioned, you know, a whole new wing, or-
It was a lot.
It was, it was fairly.
Lots like, lots of locker, or, or lockers.
But I mean, it, a lot needs done more than cosmetically. I mean, we need the new boiler, we need the new heating, air conditioning is, is a major system. Uh, the infrastructure for electrical. Security.
Security.
Well, you're probably gonna go studs. You know, you gotta, you gotta have to have wiring and plumbing.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, wiring plus all the intricacies, wired for something besides blackboards. Don't know if they did work. Have to buy more chalk.
I was giving you another section, there's one page in here that Tracy went through with me, actually, it's, and I'll, I'll make sure we're on the same page. We're just still looking at some numbers. These are, these are updated figures on cost. Uh, not on cost, but on bond cost, okay? Should be a whole new file. Should be a whole new file. You guys don't have enough of them.
Who's uh, who's going to blow up here?
Not me.
Not me.
Not me, let's, I don't need much game one earlier.
Somebody's timer is going off.
My timer, probably my clock.
It's probably the warning, because seven fifty-five, didn't we say two hours? Yes. So that's probably a warning for that.
So you guys asked for this last week, I didn't work some, not last week, it's been a week or so, this is the, this is the most updated numbers I got from Piper Jaffray, I just wanted to give it to you. If you look at page, and it should be, let's double check. Kind of the difference, if you look at page three, you, you've seen this, what a bond levy is, what it takes, what a plant levy, supplemental levy. Um, you have that on page three, why do we use bonds on page four, our history's on page five. Your supplemental levy passed sixty percent last time, the bond failed with a forty, forty percent, that was thirteen million for rebuilds here. We haven't been very successful in building bonds, um, but we're, we're gonna change that rule. You look at your historical tax rates, we've seen these numbers before, our highest was three fifty-five, now we're paying a dollar thirty-two per thousand. That's page six, and then you have comparative tax rates in the, in between what other school districts in the state are paying. Um, we're paying a dollar thirty-two per thousand. Um, notices where I was at was at four eighty-eight, when we left after that new building. Um, but you can see down through there, Marcin Middleton, um, and the state average, I believe, is in there as well.
Question?
Yep.
You've got uh, tax levies per student at five hundred eighty-two dollars, that's what we're currently getting from our bond.
On the next page, yes, so that's for, for our tax levy per student is what you would figure out, per student we have in the district.
We get twenty-six hundred students, that's. That doesn't contribute, we're only getting a million and a half.
Million and a half, twenty-four fifty-two is the number.
Twenty-four fifty-two on student count.
Yeah, that, on the two thousand nineteen year old, these are the numbers.
Oh, these are older numbers.
Yeah.
I got you.
Then you look at the statewide average, what the tax, um, property tax bill, we're paying a hundred and seventy-two for a median-sized home. Um, versus the states at four seventy-three. Give you some information there. And then the ones that I really wanted to talk about is the debt capacity, what you have, if you wanted to max out as of right now, is eighty-seven million is what you could spend. Okay, so when you start looking at what can we put out here, we could go, if you wanted to max completely out, you could go after eighty-seven million dollars. My recommendations don't come close to that, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Well, my, I mean, I wouldn't do it, okay, so the next taxable is the historical values and your growth. Um, did, did, does everybody understand the stabilization fund? Equal, okay, so school bond, the uh, stabilization fund is, is a fund set up by the state of Idaho. That pays, it, it's based on your unemployment rate, your median income, and there's one other thing that kinda figures your percentage. But they pay a certain percentage, and if you look at, we would have seventeen percent, seventeen point eight percent of our, would be paid out, so when you look at. That would be, you know, when you look at it each year, they pay that out, they adjust it every year, and it helps pay your bond down quicker. Is what it does, it's a fund that doesn't cost the taxpayers any. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't go on top of what we're currently paying, I'm saying.
It's just not.
It's coming from the state, you're right.
Are you, are you running for president?
No. That was my fault, it does cost, everything, everything costs taxpayers, you're right.
Actually, the other one is poverty level is, I, I was at the state when we got that in.
That's, that's a great thing, so then the next page is, I think, the one that everybody wants, you're right, it does cost the taxpayers. This is the page you guys wanted to see, page thirteen, okay? If you went on a sixty, if you went after a sixty million dollar bond on a twenty-year, right now, he's, he's, he's setting it at three point zero six percent interest for that bond, that's a half a percent high. Cause he wants to make sure that if you do, if we do run this in May and sell those bonds, then we don't come out with our fluctua, our numbers off. Okay, so the.
Hold it, I want.
Oh, you're on the next page.
No, no.
Unless you wanna.
You want me to go back?
Oh, no, going page forward.
Gotcha, okay, but you said he's, he's three point.
Right here, that's the page on. Three point six percent.
Okay, and you're saying he's a half a percent high, so it's really two point five six.
That's what we can, that's what he thought, when we ran this, we could get, we could sell our bonds for. And that was before the interest rates just dropped again, I think.
Uh, I don't know if they dropped them, they said they weren't.
Yeah, so.
They dropped them.
But he hasn't, so when Eric put these together, he put a half percent in there for margin of error. So on a sixty million, if we, we would go after sixty million, our interest cost on that on a twenty years, twenty-one million dollars. So our projected total taxpayers that have to pay for is eighty-one million. Um, the levy equalization would come back, come back and pay approximately fourteen million, half, you know, fourteen and a half million, so let's see that.
Yep.
Total boat, so we're almost a tax-free bond, I mean, we're almost an interest-free bond, we're four million into that one, okay? Um, your average projected for per thousand is two dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand, so your one hundred thousand is two hundred fifty-five dollars, is what you're, that's what you would get on a, on a. On a hundred thousand dollar home, that's what your taxes would increase by, two hundred fifty-five dollars.
That is with the homeowner's exemption.
Correct, so that'd be, you take the eighty thousand off, right, so you're basically half, you, so if you had a two hundred thousand dollar home, you're being taxed on a hundred thousand, you pay two fifty-five.
So farm ground at a hundred thousand, it's nobody more, that's the point is.
Well, but, but farm ground's taxed different, and I'll tell you that in a second.
But it's, it's valued different.
It's valued, it's taxed the same, but so then you look at your thirty-year, it would be thirty-year low, I don't recommend a thirty-year bond in any way.
Why not, I just, I just wanna hear your reason.
Cause look at your interest rate, your interest rate. Gotcha, what you pay, I, I, I hate paying interest, and that's why I think you'd look at, if you actually, if you went after a seventy million dollar um, bond, if you looked at that on a twenty-year. You jump from two fifty-five to two ninety-eight. Or to two ninety-eight, two hundred ninety-eight dollar, and then eighty million dollars put you at three forty. Which the last bond, when you, the last number you had, sixty million dollar bond was three twelve, I think three dollars and twelve cents is what it kinda cost. So because of the increased value within the community, you know, you get more money in for two fifty-five where you're, where you're basically at, does that make sense? All right, Tracy, you have, does that make sense to you?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
I know you got this, you should be presenting this. What I'm saying though is.
No, you add a dollar thirty-two to this, right?
Currently.
Well, cause of what you're paying.
Yeah, cause you're currently paying, but that's one more year. You're only paying for another year.
Yeah, but we're probably gonna replace that with something else.
Correct, we'll talk about that in a second, but.
Okay.
But, but, or we can talk about that anytime, that's, but that's, right now, you, you're right, we're talking, if we were to run this in May. And sell those bonds, then your next year's taxes, so it'd be into two thousand twenty-one, your taxes go up by two dollars fifty-five cents, but that'd be the same time, you're gonna lose your supplemental. If you don't pass another supplemental, correct? Cause we'll be done with that full year, I mean, we'll know, we'll be in this, we'll have one year with a dollar, one year with a dollar thirty-two, okay? So you're right, so that'll put you up at, if you add a dollar thirty-two and two fifty-five, you set it four eighty-eight, right?
Three sixty.
Three sixty something.
Three eighty, which is, look at where that puts you in the state average, you know, we're, we're not paying anywhere near what others, and I get it, you guys, I get it, it costs money, and I get it, okay?
But it's only for another year, and the school hasn't been built by that time yet.
What do you mean?
So we still have one more year. It would come on point five, before we even started that one, I think it was what Clark's saying.
Before your, before your bond payment would come out.
Right. So it'd roll off before your bond came.
But you're, but you're right, then we have to figure out what to do with the supplemental, with or without.
Unless it's a supplement, something else.
Okay?
Like maintenance.
Which might need, yeah.
So then these are some of the numbers that I, that Tracy, Tracy worked on, and, and these are not updated, so these are what, but. He all, he looked at projected taxpayers' impact on agricultural land, there's four, uh, four different types of ag land, there's irrigated ag. And Erica told me that the estimated taxable market value is one thousand twenty-six.
Who's Eric?
But it's Eric Harringer, he's Piper Jaffray. He's, he's the financier.
What did Holly tell you?
Holly, Holly said that she didn't know where that number came from, and said it was fifteen, right?
Well, it says, uh, basically a thousand eighteen is what the figures are, but when you take irrigated, that includes the bottom ground. You know, all kinds of irrigated.
Yeah, grass, the grassland back in the foothills is considered ag ground, but it's, it's just pasture now, with no real value.
But there, so each one of them's different though, right? Cause you have irrigated, irrigated land, ag land, it's gonna be designated, and that might be a higher number, but it kinda tells you, what's a sixty million dollar bond, if it was, it was. Taxable market value was one thousand twenty-six, you're gonna pay twenty-six hundred a, a year for a thousand acres. That's what you would pay per year on irrigated ag, now if it was.
That's using these figures.
Using these figures, so I can get these figures updated with what, what Holly says should be in each of these areas. Um, on irrigated grazing land, it's twenty-three hundred for a thousand acres, so I'm not sure, I mean, and then the next one is dry ag land, and the cheapest one is dry ag grazing. Is how they break them out, is my understanding, and I'm not the expert in that, Eric's my expert in that, so, but we'll get the updated numbers, but it tells you kinda, if you had a thousand acres, what it would cost you per year.
Better start running more calc, Tracy.
Okay? And then the other stuff is the same data we've had in the best, uh, then it tells you when to run it, you either run it in March, May, or August, if you see the drops on those. So that, that gives you the most up-to-date stuff, that was in September, that I have, as far as um, late September gave me, as far as where our numbers are. Questions about that?
Well, I just, I just wanted to, to just point out to you, like you were saying here, twenty-year, sixty million dollar bond, we're talking two point five five per thousand.
Correct.
Um, so that, that only puts us, puts us a little bit less than we're paying in two thousand and eighteen, correct, if we don't include the one point three two.
Or new maintenance left me on top.
Or, or new maintenance.
Correct.
So it's not, for sixty million dollars, it's not listed. But because we have property values that have increased, which means.
Okay, we're gonna slide out the sixty million, how much of this could we get done for that?
You don't wanna hear a high school.
Or just the high school, is that just the high school, or is that the high school, some middle school, some view, some Ola?
So, so, and that's, that's, if, if this is your, this is what I need to know, you want me to, at our next meeting, come back and say, okay, for sixty million, how much of the, how many do these projects, priority number one being the high school, new high school. Priority number two being, um, what?
Well, it depends who you talk to.
Oh, yeah, priority number two is the middle school. Middle school, priority, and so what are the, all those things consist of, then you, then you sit down and you build that out, but this, this committee's gonna say, our number one priority, what I, what we need to say is. I know, can, can this community, will this community go for a brand-new high school? You, I mean, and that's, is that what we need? And if that was what we need, then it becomes the board's responsibility, okay, well, we're gonna move the middle school here, we're gonna put a four million dollar, um, two million dollar gym here, we're gonna do this here. All within that, that, that sixty million we're going after.
And you're saying the middle school, you're talking about the domes, right?
You, cause I, well, I'm assuming if you're gonna build a new high school, you're gonna move your middle school to the dome.
I'm just clarifying that, that, that would be over here.
But then this building itself would have things that would be done to it as well.
That's why I'm thinking maybe a lower bond, and maybe the facilities, maintenance, like ten-year levy would be a way to go to.
Talking about that, and I'd like to.
I would like to throw that in there, I'd like to talk about that, if that's an option to lower. Lower the bond. As far as like a high school. Just for the high school? Yes, do more upgrades on the rest of the buildings. With the facilities levies, just for facilities maintenance.
Yes.
Which we could do everything else on a piecemeal basis as we go down the road.
Yep. If you go after, uh, let's say we, let's say we get the numbers, and I find out that we can, if we can build a high school for fifty-five million dollars. We know that's gonna drop our cost um, per thousand, right? You have to, at the same time, go after what is known as plant facilities levies, um, two tenths of a percent would generate about two point six million a year, based on our, what our current property values are. That have to be earmarked for your facilities and maintenance. So that money can be saved, this can't be spent in general funds, it can't be used to buy teachers, it can't be used to buy this, it has to be anything to do with facility. So that's the only thing to do with, if you wanted to spend the first year, the board said, we're gonna put two million dollars into a brand-new gym at the view, view, that's what the board could do with that money. Because it's typically, uh, uh, plant facilities levies ramp for ten years for a specific amount of time. Um, and then it's, but, and the plant facilities levy, I, I, I can get you the numbers, I think I looked at it as about thirty-eight cents per thousand, is what it would be in two tenths, I think. Don't quote me on that, cause I, I don't, I didn't, I ran them last week or two weeks ago, but I was thinking it was about thirty-eight cents per thousand.
And I'm, if I'm correct, you said that we don't have to spend that money, we can bank it and, and build it up to do a bigger project.
Yep, you can, you can earmark, so that, but that's the board, that doesn't become the school, and that doesn't really become the, that becomes the board's direction. So if all of a sudden, you wanna put a half a million dollars a year away for the next four years to get that two million for the new view, view, um, gym, you could do that. Or you could spend it all out of one thing, you can use that money to do um, grounds upkeep, as far as all of your sprinkler systems, uh, equipment. Fencing, anything to do with facilities and maintenance can, that plant facilities, um, and it's a great thing to have to maintain your facilities.
Can you buy a building with it?
If you had enough money, you can buy a building, you can buy land.
You can lease a building with it.
What?
Can you lease property with it?
That's a good question, I didn't know about that one. So I, I'd have to look that one up.
Somebody had mentioned, and I, I mentioned this, uh, of having somebody fund a building, a building in Ola, and just leasing it to the school district. As a possibility, somebody else build the building. Like a Larry Sawyer, for example. Sanders are another big, deep pocket here.
Well, I just. Issue with that is just, I.
I don't know.
You know, you know, somebody else's property, you're not making, you have no investment. I don't think, I don't think you can, because one, this board cannot commit to, you know, financially, a financial burden for other boards down the road, that's why.
We've done that on the upgrades to the heating and air conditioning windows, we're paying for that still.
And that, but.
That was done by a past board.
Is it leased?
It's a lease. Is it a lease?
Long-term lease, yeah.
It's a long-term lease, yes.
I have to look into that, cause I don't.
We've had it for a long time though, like, cause it's almost paid off.
Yeah, it's almost paid off, it's been quite a while.
So Mr. Woods, the reason I asked that is Mr. Jones had brought up maybe purchasing.
There's a piece of property, but I don't know if we wanna talk about property in this meeting.
No, no, that's not, I'm not talking about that property, I've been talking about buying a building.
Yeah, even building, maybe I wouldn't really wanna talk about them out in public, because it's not a good thing.
If I could jump in for just a second too, uh, I would say that there's, you, you're sounding like you're finding, finding some interesting ways that we can potentially fund some of the projects, that, that our committee said, yeah, those are areas that we're interested in. But I would, I would also caution you that if you're thinking of trying to do some of those creative funding down the road, the down the road is not really an option. Cause we're already behind the eight hole on the, the rate at which our community is growing, so if you're thinking, well, we'll wait two years, four years, or whatnot, to be able to remodel view, view, or to be remodeling, you know, building A, B, C, or D. It's gonna be too late, and we're gonna be wasting money on modulars, and I don't want our, our community and our schools to become the modular town, I, I don't. I don't think that it's a good use of money, it's not a good use of my tax dollars, and um, that's also something that our committee came back with, is, that's not the first option that, that our, our community is supporting, yeah. So I would say act swiftly and think long-term, because that's what our, our years-long work came back with. And if, and if you are stewards of the community and action, taking action on what the community wants, that's what they just should.
One of my fears too, I mean, as long as it was plant facility, I think is great, how you pitched it possibly in the last meeting, is that we're kind of checking off that box of the concern of long-term maintenance schedules, but. Yeah, my fear too is bottling up a lot of our priorities or needs in that, um, different boards, that could be our board, another board, or whomever, just for whatever factors come into play. Process starts to get jogged, or whatever the word is, and then the priorities get deviated, and then we still don't wind up with what we need, so.
I guess one of my concerns is if you get it for a sixty or even greater bond, will it pass the community? I'm hearing yes from this side, no, but I don't wanna be sitting out there in March, no, May, no, next year, no. Uh, I'd rather go for something realistic that we get a yes on.
Yeah.
And if it's just the high school. And if it's just the high school, then I'd go for a high school and a facilities maintenance. To take care of the other issues we've got. We're not, we're not ignoring them, putting a plan in place for them.
That might be our plan B. Sorry to interrupt, Carrie. But that might be the next step.
Well, I, I think we need to, to plan for what have we failed. But what I'm concerned about is, if we build a new high school, what are we gonna do with our old school? We wanna move in there, but there's maintenance needs. What is the priority on those maintenance needs? And how much money are we gonna need to make it so that we can move the middle school into the high school?
We've gotta continue on with what we're doing. So it's gonna be, what, three years minimum for a high school build?
Oh, you won't get it done in less than two and a half, for sure.
Yeah, so it'll be a three-year, so you've got to, you gotta do the maintenance anyway.
Well, we're, we're talking about upkeep.
Yeah.
You know, beyond the day-to-day stuff, we're talking about major repairs. And, and this last time, I think there was, what, about four or five million dollars worth of major repairs that they had suggested that we do? I'd like to get a handle on, on what is really needed. You know, if we're gonna move in there, i- if the high school is, is recommending to move, why in the heck are we moving the middle school in there? So if we have to do some upgrades, we need to know, you know, that money's gonna have to be available.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Because if you're in the scenario where you have a high school that passes and the levy that doesn't pass, then you're looking at having a bunch of middle schoolers who cannot move into the high school because it's not safe. You know, they don't have the safety things for it. So I think, first of all, I think we need to find out how much these pieces are gonna cost. How much would it cost to have the high school revamped with the middle school?
Pretty sure we talked a little bit, sorry, pretty sure we talked a little bit with Mike. And, and said, what with, what with heating and fire? And a couple of other things that are like bigger that need to be done. Which is where I think we, we got, I think it was like four million for one and four million for another. In order to get this ready for the kids coming over here and the high school ready for the kids going over there. Pretty sure we had, we had that conversation with Mike a little bit about that. Cuz he had gone through the list and that was one of the things that, that I thought they did. Well, at least in the bond that failed, is there was a pretty itemized list that we liked to see. But I, I think you're right, I think there's some of those things are like, eh, is that really needed to do this? I don't think so. And so it went from thirteen, fourteen to four. You know, and I think it kind of scratched away a little bit of those things, but don't quote me on that.
Yeah, it was, it was around the four million dollars for that.
For the, for the high school?
Yeah, but for not, not as, not an elaborate review, it was just for like.
Necessities.
Yeah, make it safe, make it so that, yeah, if we had a dangerous person in there.
Yeah, get, get a better safe front entryway, we still have the gym, we still have the auditorium. Get some updated heating and cooling and.
This bill wash.
Yeah.
My question, how much is that going to inflation?
My biggest concern is we're gonna spend all the money on one school. And we're gonna spend a whole bond, sixty million dollar bond on one school. There's so much other needs done too, so.
Yeah.
Have to try to play catch-up.
Be pretty cool.
That's the bond, we don't have the money.
No, we can't even afford it.
I've done a lot of thinking on this. I think Bu-View is a secret. If you could add on enough to Bu-View, put the kindergarten, first, second, and maybe third, and empty out Carberry. And move the fifth grade, sixth grade out of here, and then move the ninth grade down, you've bought yourself some time. What is it gonna cost to, to, you know, buy time so that if we wanna build a school, you know, give us an opportunity to sell that to the public? Because if, if this fails, what is our plan B? And I think we should have some concept of what plan B looks like on the table.
Since on this building construction comparisons, OYDE High School is the most current.
That's, and the number on that, I apologize, cuz that's just the actual bid for the building that we blew down else. Because Pennant Construction's who gave me that bid.
So no land?
They didn't have the land in because they, they gave me what they bid out for the building because they didn't actually win the bid. So they don't know what the, that's just the hard cost for the building, if that makes sense. I think that's what they said. So that number's not accurate.
And for sixty acres of land, we figured how much?
Sixty acres of land?
Around here. Probably eight thousand an acre right now.
No. By my way, there's, there's two pieces for sale for around, average, a sixteen thousand.
Yeah, we'll see how many set there for that too.
I don't wanna talk.
I think there's options.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think there's options.
Okay.
State.
A lot of.
If people are going to move ground and move it right now, it's gonna be eight to ten thousand an acre.
Eight to ten, ten, I think ten is probably more.
If they're realistically gonna move it.
Yep.
You're not gonna pay sixteen thousand an acre for it.
That forty thousand was for two hundred and fifty thousand square.
But that's only the building. I'm sorry, that would, cuz that, and it just, that was the number we had because they weren't the ones in.
How many square feet do we need at a new high school?
What do we need as far as student population and square footage in a high school?
With the CTE building, with all your facilities, you're, and you're gonna wanna go at least a thousand. We're probably gonna be wanting a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand square feet.
Well, where, where does Perta fit in all this?
That's with the CTE building.
That's what he just said.
Perta says they got money to build a building.
So we went over this the last meeting. If we separate, we want to have the facilities.
I understand that.
To keep going with that.
Yep.
We can't tie ourselves, that.
So, Perta, Perta, you're right. We, we would work with Perta whether, so like, what Ridgeview did with, or Valleyview did with Ridgeview School District, it's kind of the same thing what we probably do, is their CTE building was a shell. And then they came in and built it the way they wanted to build it as they, as they went.
And so they pay rip?
Well, that's probably what we would do with CTE. If we were to do that, I'd go Perta, and then this is what, their payment on a five million dollar building is eighty thousand. That's what you're gonna get for a lease to have the CTE building or whatever. You guys would make the numbers up. I mean, the, the board would make that decision. But that's kind of the way I would look at it because the building needs to be in its school districts. If it's, if we're gonna put our money into it, just, you know, and then lease it out, however we do that. Or you deed it out completely and say, this is yours, you do what you want. But how do you, I mean, how would you do that? I mean, that's a little bit tougher. That's when you can.
Mention that a little bit, where they, where they would come in and provide the equipment and tools and, and bring all that in, get a lease at like, you know, a built-to-suit type of situation.
Yeah, we just build the shell, they put this stuff in.
The school district.
Yeah.
So I'd like to go back to the high school. So if we can build it for fifty million and we bond for sixty, well, ten million cover all the rest of the projects? Can we get people in here to give us that number to see if ten million will cover?
You've got some of those numbers already. The facility group's giving you pretty, they're pretty accurate numbers as far, but I'm not sure what the, and it depends on how big a high school you choose to build. You know, and exactly what you want it within that high school. Do you want, cuz everything, there's so many things. If you wanted a high school, I mean, do you want natural grass or do you wanna go to artificial turf? How many, how big a stadium do you want? How many gyms do you want? How big, all those kind of things, you know, are what you would wanna look at. If that's what you want, that's the next step. I can, I can get you, I can say, we want a fifty million dollar high school that has these things. Tell me what we can do, you know, and, and, and go to Designs West and then say, you can get this. You can get an auditorium, two gyms, weight room, or you can go to a different company. That would be a part, part of the process that the board's gonna go to, make a decision, you know, and say, hey, we're gonna hire this architect firm, this, this construction firm, if that's what you choose to. I missed throwing out Designs West cuz they've worked a lot in the, in the Treasure Valley. There's some other great ones out there. Okay? I'm just saying that that's one that, what they, some of their awarded bids that they've had, the, the reason why they've been awarded the bids is because they typically have about eight percent more classroom space in their designs than some of them that come on. That's what, you know, I've seen. You know, so that's why, that's why Meridian went with them on OYDE because it had eight percent more classroom space for what they got. And that's what, you know, that's what I think is important. But I can get you numbers and say, hey, we got fifty million, what can we get with that?
See, what's the student population we're looking at?
We need to, we need to be building a building for a thousand kids minimum. Because three years down the road, we're gonna be there, and I bet you fashion that. And what scares me there is we may build and be at capacity at the same time.
That's why you designed it to add on to it.
Or you do, or you do your base bid of a thousand kids and have an alternate for another two thousand, that if the money is there, you say, the board comes back and says, add it. Cuz what, what'll happen in that bid process is once those bids are open, then the board has a decision, do you, what do you add, what do you, what do you take away off that base bid?
Doesn't it change the value of that construction loan?
Oh, yeah. Change orders? No, 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 this isn't. What was that tracing?
It says, once that bid's turned in, you do not want to add. They double the cost.
I'm not, no, that's not what I mean. So I.
Oh, okay.
So if I have a base bid, can I, I'm gonna use this as an example.
Sure.
Is I've got a thousand square foot building right here. That's my base bid. I want, I want this with all these features. A bid, an add alternate on this same bid is to add another two thousand classrooms like that. Now, if the bid comes in and we can get it all into that fifty million, or what we, what we earmarked, we get it all. But if it's not, then this is, we're getting this for sure, but then now we can add other things to it, so whatever our add alternates are. They could be anything from, an add alternate could be synthetic, you know, synthetic turf. And you have grass, and then the add alternate comes in and we go, nope, we don't wanna do that. Or LED lighting, well, everything's going LED now, which is smart. But, you know, it could be, so they're, they're, they're bid at the exact same time.
Okay.
Yeah, then that's, and that way, the, the, there's flexibility. If it comes in higher than we expected or lower, you add things into it. That's what happened in Middleton when they hit the perfect storm. They had, that's why they could do the artificial turf. That's why they have closed captioning, it's closed circuit TV between the stadiums. That's why they have heated sidewalks. If you didn't know that, they have heated sidewalks in the back, so. But they had extra money to spend. Plus they added another, I think, two hundred classrooms, or two hundred, room for another two hundred students. So, but they had the money within that bid. So it was just another, it was like, here's your base bid, you get this, but then, hey, if you, if you have extra money, you can get this and this and this. So you throw those out there. There's a lot of those things you can put out there.
I understand. I don't, it might off on that, but, you know, when I'm looking at these building construction comparisons, I'm, you know, as far as OYDE, I know it doesn't include land, but when we're tossing out fifty million for a high school, I think from these figures, it's gonna be less than that. And then you add in a gym at, at Bu-View and do something in Ola, you know, half, half a million, five hundred thousand. And then you have upgrades at the high school and at this school, then you're in the fifty to sixty range, but you wouldn't exceed that number. I would, I wouldn't think you'd have to.
I think that's what the, that's almost exactly what the facilities committee had. It ended up at, what, fifty?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-eight, fifty-seven. Yeah. Yeah, I think they're exactly.
Cuz I wanna show the community that, yeah, absolutely, we're conservative in this and we're not maxing our capacity. That's a huge value add to getting this thing passed. And then whether we went for a plant facility on top of that or not, that's a whole nother discussion on this.
Mr. Jones? I, I'd like to know what this group's thinking is in building a high school on new ground or building a high school on current ground?
Current ground.
I don't know, how much room you got over there?
Thirty acres.
So you're gonna have the middle school there and the high school there.
I, we, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking, if we were to build a high school, would we wanna build it next to the, the high school we have or do we wanna put it on new ground? I just wanna answer that question.
Well, I wanna see the numbers. What's the difference in price?
I, I, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
If, if there's a, a, a five million dollar savings and putting it at the high school, I mean, we know we're gonna save the cost of ground. So at ten thousand dollars, that's six million bucks. So we know we're gonna save six million dollars.
And if you could buy more ground at, at the high school, the current high school, you know, if you could get more, I, I don't know.
Where do you get six million bucks for ground?
They buy sixty acres at ten thousand dollars an acre.
That's six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
It'd be a million bucks.
Put my decimal place in a little spot.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that you're in infrastructure, but, well, I mean, going back, we talked about having, part of the value add is having room to breathe.
That's the thing, with putting a facility over there, there's no more room. And, and again, I'm not interested in this if we don't have room to grow. I'm just telling you there right now.
One of the things I'm very concerned about is I think if you went back and looked at every projection that's been made in this county in the last twenty years, it'd all be high. Every one of them. And I think that, I think a thousand kid high school is too much. I think a, a seven or eight hundred. And the reason for that is this, I'd rather have two seven hundred high schools than one fourteen hundred. It's a whole lot easier to manage and that, and it's a whole lot less problem.
For cost of building.
It may be, but if, if, if in fact, if in fact, the, the projections are right, which would be the first time in twenty years. But if they are, if, if the growth is gonna go up at twenty or percent or something a year, then you're gonna be building new high schools anyway. And so why not keep those high schools at a manageable size? Well, if you go with, well, but see, if you go with, if you go with an eight hundred, an eight hundred kid, kid school. You, we, you know, we, we fit easily in that now. You get, you go, you go for a few years.
Don't we almost max out right now?
Well, but if you, when you max out, what do you do? You, you back off and if, as long as you've got classrooms in this area, and we, and eight hundred is eight hundred additional to the classrooms we already have. So when you backs that out, you're, you're backing that ninth grade out of there. And you, and you got, you got the class size of two hundred and thirty or whatever it is to be, to be that eight hundred. I just, I think we need to, we need to look at this in, in terms of stair stepping it, not, not trying to build the biggest high school we can find.
I don't, I don't think a thousand, I don't think a thousand, high schools are not very big, e- even in this community.
How many kids are in the, in the ninth grade?
Oh, man, you're asking tough questions. I think about two hundred, just a little over two hundred.
So that means, that means you'd move the high school down about five hundred kids?
No, seven, seven fifty, seven, seven hundred.
You got seven fifty now. You take two hundred kids out, that's a little over five hundred.
Where you put those two hundred kids?
Well, like I said.
You move them here, so you push them down here, make it suffocate the ninth, you're in the same boat. All you've done is shoved it down.
Every, every, if we build a high school, if we build a high school of eight hundred, that means we got eight hundred more rooms or more seats in this district. Right now, we have now a capacity, today, we've got, we've got capacity for every job we got, plus a few. We, we're adding eight hundred to that. And the point I'm making is, is it's not like you, you're taking one school out and putting a new one in, you're putting a new one in.
How's, how's that work?
Well, I did.
You gotta move the grades, you gotta make sure the grades are all accounted for.
We would be minimizing this facility. That's the problem.
Yeah, you're, you're two high schools in a small enough community. But how would that work with even, I mean, on the score?
If you've got two eight hundred kid high schools, this is not a small unit.
They're gonna have to be totally.
I don't, I don't think that the community would support that cuz it would be doubling your costs, your building costs, and we're trying to be tight enough as we are.
I'm not talking about building a high school now. I'm talking about building a high school, a smaller high school now, with understanding that we would have to build a newer, another high school if the growth continues. Again, I, I'm telling you, the growth is not, is not matched the projections ever in real lifetime.
I would agree with you there because at the high school, we did not project that we'd grow this fast this year, and we grew by sixty, eighty kids, and we projected much less than that.
Yeah, one year, one year.
Yeah, but this, that's, that's the trend. I mean, what are we gonna, where are we gonna guess that the, the new buildings that they're, that we're projecting, that we're building out by the highway are not gonna contain high school and elementary kids? They're gonna have children. This is gonna be a, a, a community that inspires families.
I mean, the infrastructure's gonna change too with the highways and things that the state's planning to try to connect. That's different than the past twenty years.
Well, I will, I'll, I'll make this concession to you. I'm not a prophet, nor is my fa- was my father. But I don't think yours was either. And I, and I'm, and I'm really not, you know, we, if we build out too far, we're gonna, we're gonna be too small. We're not gonna pass, we, there's a limit to what kind of bond we can pass, and it's less than fifty million.
Well, but we're, we're talking, we're talking a property debt, but I mean, you guys were paying three dollars fifty-five cents two years ago. We're talking, going right back up to that. We're just above that. So it's not like it's something that they, they, actually, just last year they were paying. This is the first year it's been off the books, right?
Yeah, the, the number, and it's so. It's less than change in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah. So you're going, I mean, so the idea, I mean, and that. Yeah, so you're willing, I mean, so the idea, I mean, now, that's the hardest part, it, 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 no matter what, it's gonna be a sell to raise taxes, no matter how you look at it. And I get it, but, and I, and I get what you're saying, it's a pro, you know, you're not a prophet of what's gonna happen, but if you don't watch what you're doing, no matter what you guys decide to do and what we decide to do, you're gonna be playing catch-up like West Ada, okay? Because if, you know, there's three hundred or three hundred, or two hundred forty-two homes in the one, that's anticipating three hundred sixty-three new kids, school age kids in this district in seven years, just in that one subdivision. Okay, and so that's something to keep in mind, and I know there's a minor subdivision going up in Sweet, and there's one going out, but I did, I wrote the letters to those, I mean, they're small ones. But it, you know, so keeping up with that growth is gonna be big, and, and, and I get it, but I, here's the thing that taxpayers are gonna hate as well. You build an eight hundred square, uh, eight hundred person, uh, high school. And as it gets, and you, as you move in, you say, hey, guess what we need to add on, because it's not big enough.
Yeah, like a year and a half or two later.
I think the one thing Bill's alluding to is, uh, we need to have, we don't wanna lose seats in our district. By shutting down most of this school, where we have the capability of, if the high school doesn't exit, if we build a thousand and we end up with twelve hundred kids, we have the capability of pulling the ninth grade back and then having a true middle school and shifting things down, cause we have an extra school, we've got a few of you, we've got some things we can work around. So we don't wanna lose seats.
Absolutely.
But we don't wanna overbuild either, it's a, it's a fine line.
But we still have to find a spot for our Black Canyon people to, in all this discussion. But let's not forget.
There is, there is a facility that we could.
Facility could still be here, and we still have a opportunity to expand this facility, even at a later date, to include a new section to house a junior high.
Are you talking this though?
Yeah.
Hmm?
In, in the future, is that, yeah.
Oh, not necessarily here.
No, no, not, not in this scheme.
Well, Middleton was having this discussion in the late eighties when I was teaching over there, and the very thing that we say isn't going to happen, did happen. They became Boise's bedroom community, and they blew up gigantic in a short period of time, and I think that that's probably what's gonna happen here as soon as Highway sixteen gets opened up all the way to the freeway, it's going to be that type of a community. I hate to see it, but I think it's gonna happen. And I think if we wait too long, I went back and looked at the projected figures two thousand and six, how much it would cost to build four square foot. And then I compared it to two thousand and fifteen, which were the two sets of figures that I had from the previous work that had been done. And it was almost a cost increase of sixty percent to do that, that much more than it did in, in two thousand and six, so why not do it now? And then be prepared for the future, rather than being always a catch-up mode, because that's a horrible place to be with taxpayers. I think they'd rather bite the bullet upfront and do it, and have a maintenance levy with it, so we're being fiscally responsible. So that we are taking care of the buildings, which have not been taken care of for years. We can take care of those buildings at the same time we're building the new buildings. And I think you can sell that to taxpayers, but I don't think you can sell playing catch-up year after year after year. You get bond fatigue, people will not go for it. That's not too bad.
Well, I think one thing, we gotta wait and see what happens tomorrow, see if the fire district, uh, you know.
Now, that's smaller than what we're talking about.
No, not necessarily.
You've got a small number of people that's gonna have to pay that tax.
Yeah, I know, but what I'm saying is that it's.
Yeah.
See, and, while we're on that subject, that's something that people that were within city limits need to understand.
Yeah.
They do not vote on that, that is strictly a county tax.
No, not a county.
Or a, just a district.
Not all the whole county either.
So it's, it's gonna affect a lot of people that we're gonna turn around and ask to go spend another umpteen hundred million dollars.
Don't go that, don't go that high.
Well, I, I'll tell you, we sat and had those same discussions in notice, when we discussed the fact that they were trying to get to Canyon County Jail. And, you know, and we finally, as a board and, and committee, decided, you know, we can't be always playing, you know, okay, well, what about the fire district? We gotta figure out what's best for us and put it out in front of the public and say, here's what our, our kids need, here's what's good for our district, you know, our schools, here's what's good for our community. And then you just kinda let it lay, and you, you, you do the best you can, and if you come back and voters say no, I think what I, what I would suggest is, is as we prioritize this list, the only thing I would say is maybe we spend some money and do a survey and say, okay, here's what we're planning. And it's a phone survey, they go out and they, you know, um, Mr. Boucher can do that, and they can, and they can tell you, hey, this, this rates very high in voter approval. You know, this rates low, maybe you wanna move that down on your priority list, that might be an option to have, you know, as a board, that's more of a board decision afterward, they, you guys have prioritized. They go, hey, do we really wanna go after all this, or do we wanna take this one off, cause it, it, it doesn't resonate well with our voters, does that make sense? That's an option down the road.
I think we had a similar survey done.
We did.
I, and I can see it already, I didn't get a call, I didn't.
I didn't either.
It's like, oh, it's a.
But I didn't go online.
Yeah, and that's just an op, that was always an op, or do you, but that, but again, it's gotta be what you think this community, and what these kids need, and what, and what our community's willing to, to go after.
So at this point, there's our next step, getting some figures, so we can hone in on the magic number.
Are we on the A of the agenda?
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, 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 we are.
Everybody wants to move forward.
It just says future, it didn't. Yeah, that was his little breakout. I took what we talked about in the last meeting, cause the boss was gone, and then he came in and did what he was gonna do, he should've communicated a little better.
Well, this one right here is what was, what was on the.
The one that was posted, correct, the one with our logo on it is the one that was posted.
Yeah, so our next meeting, we kinda have a meeting scheduled for public input on the thirteenth, right?
Before our regular board meeting?
That would be before a regular board meeting, now, the board members are gonna have to go into executive session at six o'clock, so they won't be available for a little bit of that, well, probably until seven. Is that okay if we do that executive session? I even regret to ask. But, um, that would be, if there's a couple of facilities, just, and just to ask for, um, public input, nobody may show up, but it'd be nice to give everybody the opportunity to have some public input on this prioritized list, kinda where we're at, right?
Can anybody set up some call centers, phones there, for people to call in, to the board members, or the committee members?
You won't even put your, you won't even put your phone number on.
I might be in executive session. They could actually get called, but I won't answer.
I can't, I can't even call you.
I don't have a phone with me.
Yeah, it's great, I mean.
We could open up comments, but I won't be, cause we usually block comments in the live stream.
Let me, let me, let me check into that, but on the thirteenth, how many facility members could be there, just talking to community members? There could be a few of you that could be there at five thirty to, um, almost seven, a couple yet?
I mean, I mean, not even make it to the meeting, so.
I could be there.
That way.
There'll be an executive session.
There'll be an executive.
We have an executive session.
At six.
The board members on the thirteenth.
I will try, but I've got people on that day.
So we're just asking the.
If there's a couple other committee members, you can just answer questions, and or, or take comments, they may come back and say, what are you guys thinking?
November thirteenth?
So it's on Wednesday.
Five thirty on the thirteenth, and that's just collecting, not really a meeting.
Today is Monday.
Um, five thirty.
Day, day, it'd be a week from today after tomorrow.
Yeah, so I was right, today's Tuesday, okay, a week from tomorrow.
It's Monday, it's just really getting hot.
No, please don't say that.
It's Monday, of course.
Tomorrow, it's, it's, I do know that, that's all I know, that is Tuesday. You're gonna have any of our regular board meetings, and you're gonna accept public input from five thirty to seven, but the board won't be there today?
That's right, we're gonna be in board session.
We can live stream it.
The actual school board.
Okay.
We'll be there.
The committee, the rest of the committee. People wanna speak to you not being there, you know.
Well, they, we're gonna be there till six, but we have to go into executive, so we have a different.
What, what time you coming out of executive session?
Seven.
So, so the whole reason, though, the whole reason that we formed this committee was for you guys to bring that input and bring it to us. That was why we chose you as individuals to sit on this committee. It's just for that specific reason.
And I can live stream it for you guys, and I can set the recorder, cause I can't use that stuff in the executive session, so that stuff can still be set aside and used for you guys, we can move to the training room for executive session. Yeah, I, I just would have to say that people won't wanna speak to you for not being there, you know, that wouldn't make sense, because if you are, if you're the voice that they are trying to reach.
But I understand, but same breath, that's why we're having this committee, is.
It'd be pointless to have.
If I'm sitting out in the hallway.
Yeah, but what, what I'm saying is, if you, you're, you're setting up an opportunity for people to come in and speak, which they would think they would be speaking to you and you're not there. So maybe it's just a mingle type of thing. Or maybe it's like a different day, or, cause if you can't be there at six, then people won't be there at six, are you following me?
Yeah.
But the board will be, the board can be there at five thirty, they just have to go, they have to recess and go into an executive session, there's an issue that popped up that has to be taken care of.
Can we move it to like four thirty to five thirty?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Does that work for board members, four thirty to five thirty, and then, or, four thirty to six, and then?
Five to six.
Yeah.
Five to six. Yeah.
Five to six, having.
Five to six is public input?
Public input, and then we go in.
Executive session at six o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Aren't you, you just love this, don't you?
No, I'll be there at six.
I know, it'll be good.
Somebody's gonna send us what's happened, right?
Oh, that's one thing I would like to request.
Where'd it go?
Could, could, send out an email to the committee.
I mean, I, I apologize, I was on vacation all last week.
Well, I, I heard about that.
I needed that, I needed some.
All right. It's been here three months.
No, 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 just I didn't have, it was, had nothing to do with here, I just didn't get, I didn't get a summer, my only break, so. Sorry about that.
I got, I got a question I wanna get cleared, uh, Bob, you started this earlier in this meeting saying that what's going on here is this committee, minus the board, is gonna come up with recommendations. Is that what I'm, is that the way it is?
That's not the way the motion reads.
That's, that's why I'm, I'm.
I'm having problems being a board member, voting on something I'm gonna have to vote on later, making a recommendation to myself.
That, that's, that's what I'm trying to get clear.
Yeah.
You'll be invested in.
I guess I'm, I'm probably abstaining from a vote, I guess, cause I was under the impression that the whole reason for it is, is for you guys to communicate with us so that we could make that decision when it comes down to voting.
So then, how come you are here? Basically, that's what it is.
How come you're here?
Right.
To be a part of it and listen to you.
And get input.
And get input from you, that's why I've asked and asked and asked for you guys to speak out and talk.
We were a separate committee. We'd have a chairman, and chairman would tell you when we want you there, when we want your input, when we're ready to give you input, that's the way the committee would work.
Correct, and I spoke with the ISBA, and they said if the board chooses to drop the committee to one to two of the, the actual board members, then this would actually become a committee, and you'd be able to nominate the chair, and then you guys would provide that recommendation to the board, and the board wouldn't be the final say in what it is, so that's an option of maybe when you get to that point, okay, we've had this discussion, now it's time for you guys to make the decision and, you know, separate yourselves, or your work sessions and coming up with something, but then you're all creating the recommendation that you're gonna vote for.
And who'd you talk to at the ISBA?
Chrissy.
Yeah, so it's basically what we're in right now is a work session, we're giving you, but you guys are giving, and if you, if you stay with this, the board just puts it on the agenda and comes up and says, here's what, here's what our, here's what we're gonna do in November, December, when, well, you know, December's when you do it, and this is what we're gonna move towards, you know, or later, it doesn't matter, but if we're gonna, cause our target is still to run something from May, is that correct?
I think, I think it's gotta be decided. I think that's what this committee's gotta decide, I don't think you, I don't think there's any way you can set dates on, on any of this stuff, until you get the data together and decide what you wanna do. That, that's.
Well, the committee doesn't, won't make that decision, the board just says, we're gonna run it in March, we're gonna run it in May, we're gonna run it in.
But that's, I don't think that decision's been made either, though, I, I don't think it's been made.
Actually, the, the, the.
The motion was to shoot for.
Shoot for May.
Yeah, but it wasn't, we did not set a date.
You said May.
We said we were, we were gonna seek, that, 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 this isn't, it's not that motion, it, uh.
I think it was when the Dodi, uh, Keanu presented.
Yeah.
And Jefferson, Jefferson made the motion, I believe, it said that we'd use this, the committee's information as a basis to run it, uh, the target date in May, yeah. But, but that's to manage, so we can get into and look at it.
Start a board.
And that was just so keen to know that we have to make that decision by December, so that in January you can start.
And then the, yeah, January for, uh, March, or is that a February for a May?
You want to have that.
January is for March, and February, um, actually, March is for May, but you can't wait until then if you're gonna, we need to start to, the whole idea behind it was to make a decision, move forward, and go with that, is what I thought was the decision.
Yes, with what we've put on here, what is your marching orders between now and next week?
Vacation. No, so.
Been there, done that.
I know that, I'm going to ISBA for three or four days, so I'm gonna be looking at a cost for a, uh, basically, a cost per square foot on, on new high school, new land, and actually, if I can get it separated off the new land. I'm gonna look at what we have in the facilities, um, for what was needed in, uh, the middle school. So we get kind of a list, and what they, I'm gonna look back at what you have in, in the past, cause again, we, to see, okay, that thirteen million dollars, we're gonna do these things for the middle school, but if we're moving the middle school out, then it's gonna be upgrades over here to the high school, so what is that gonna look like? This is another priority, I believe, is what are we gonna do with OLS, so start getting some numbers on that, you know, we already kinda have the numbers on that, it's a half a million dollars to fix what we currently have, um, and then to.
Basically, the same price.
Same price. Well, it, it's gonna be, if you figure, um, two hundred fifty dollars a square foot on our land, and I think it would be cheaper, because you have to remember, when I was, when I was saying two hundred fifty dollars to two hundred seventy-five, that's a, that's a new building with new equipment, everything, and we don't need some of that, cause all of our desks and all that can be just transitioned into there, so some of those costs will go down on that building.
So, so again, what, what are you saying to build new then?
What, what they were telling me way back is, not way back in September, that if you were building a high school, it's different, I'm telling you, this is the old number I have. Is if you didn't have land, if you had the land, you're about two seventy-five, I believe, per square foot, maybe two fifty, but I'll, I'll get, I'll get good numbers. And that's a high school, but that includes everything, when you're looking at square footage on that, you've got your facilities, which are way more than what, um, we needed in elementary, cause this is just an elementary school.
Yeah.
I'm assuming a price for a twenty-two hundred or twenty-five hundred square foot building that needs restrooms and needs a kitchen area and some teacher things, everything that was in there would be a lot less, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out, okay? These three buildings, we're just looking at what they're gonna be, they're gonna be in our, um, tenure plan, right? View view is gonna be our very quick future plan for expansion, right? So the, I'm focusing on these three buildings and that one down there, that's what you want from me, okay?
You got it, alright.
And one quick question on the O one, I, I had heard that there was some, maybe up to three hundred thousand dollar grant that was being, have you heard of anything like that?
Which grant?
Well, we're willing to listen.
It was something that, it was something that, uh, that my aunt Lori had mentioned that.
Lori and I are working on a grant, but that's, we won't know anything, that's a, um.
A whole other thing.
LEPC, that's for the emergency mitigation, you know, our big plan for this is LEPC, I can.
That's three years out, right?
No, no, it's a, December is when it's due, we already sent, sent the letter of intent in, um, it doesn't pay for it all, but it pays seventy-five percent. And that's for earthquake and/or wind, severe weather, is what we're gonna write the grant based on. Um, we'll submit it in December, we would have to pay twenty, well, we'd have to do, you know, either pay or have, um, what's the cost when you actually do the work yourself?
Work, uh, work in kind?
In, in kind, work in kind, not only, it's, that didn't cover the dry rot, the dry rot would be something, but it would, it would maybe something.
Might be something that could go, okay.
We're supposed to meet next week.
It's a, it's a fuzzy one, but just something.
Yeah, so, but, and I, I hate to talk about grants until the month.
Yeah, oh, I, I know, I just didn't know where it was, so I just.
Well, I was contacted by some deep pockets, so.
Nice.
So, I.
No, we'll just leave it at that.
We're ready to go, we're ready to start fundraising to help the district, however. We're ready to go. We're ready to start fundraising to help the district however we can.
Okay, well, I think the, the biggest thing is if we go after a bond, if it's included, just get, get people out to vote. They're, they're for everywhere. No matter if this is the, every, to swallow a two dollar fifty-five cent increase in taxes is huge for battle. I get that. You know, and, and for a farmer, it's gonna be a heck of a lot more than that, and I get that. So that's what we're gonna have to get out to people, you know, when you've got a thousand acres or five hundred acres, that's a lot of money. You know, over the course of twenty years, but, you know, you're investing in the future of this community, in this, in this valley, which you've been a part of.
You know, one thing we haven't talked about, Mr. Woods. I think people would swallow this a whole lot better if they knew that what they're investing in is gonna have good stewardship and be taken care of. Because it's deja vu all over again with middle school versus, what was it, Parkview, was that the name of the one? Same problem there. It, it, it wasn't maintained. This school hasn't been maintained. If we have some way of, of, if we go for this, this maintenance levy to guarantee to the community. That there's a new page been turned here and we're going to, to make sure that good stewardship is gonna be what is foremost in the future.
I, I'd love that, but, and that's gonna take time, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to build trust and I know, but I think this is the way you do it. Open communication, you know. I'm gonna get the numbers, so I've got the exact numbers for, for Tracy. You know, from, I'll send them over and just so we've got those numbers on the ag grind, so you can look at it based on the numbers that Holly will give me.
She didn't send them to you?
She didn't give me numbers, she just said, she couldn't figure out where Eric got his numbers. I, I didn't see numbers. Um, she gave, yes, she did, she did. But it's, but to break them down by each of those areas, and so I wanna have her and Eric talk and get the right numbers. Now, she gave me some numbers, you're right, but I wanna get those into that formula and see exactly what that looks like. 'Cause I hate giving you guys false or bad information, I really do, so.
Did you see the commercial real estate?
Do I need the commercial real?
Have, have you seen that? It's a, it's, it's pretty significant compared to other areas.
Really? So it's even worse than the ag?
Oh, wow.
It's, it's a big investment.
You get more acreage. I mean, commercial, you get what you.
Isn't it by like, um, roadway footage?
It's quite a bit higher.
I, I have one other thing to bring up. On Melvin, when they built their school, they had an issue with the city on some infrastructure. Is that they had to pay what they weren't expecting in their bond. If we, are we looking at that too? What city image is gonna require us if we're in the city limits?
Absolutely, well, that's not, that's something we will look at, that's something that, I honestly.
It'd be a big figure that we don't know what.
Well, it's not so much a big figure, it's, it's a conversation, sitting down, 'cause I think, why not get, let's wait until after the election, but I think that, that the city understands what we're setting. And we're, and we're going, and I think they're, you know, we did the same thing, we ended up, I, I can tell you, there was negotiations on. I had to go in front of the county commissioners, um, because to get the, the permit fees waived. And they did that because all they're doing is taking tax money and so they were able to waive those fees in some way and some way. You know, and you go in front of the city, we had, the biggest one was our water hookups, 'cause we went to a four inch, um, main, you know, valve. And so that was, they had to figure out what that would cost. It was outrageous, you know. It was eighty thousand, we didn't expect, and we needed to get it down to twenty, but it was like, whoa. You know, so those are all those things you, but that's after you get a bond and after you start to put it together, you know, what those costs would be.
So, Woods, in the meeting tonight, uh, do you see us getting some, some benefit? Whether, uh, impact fees or land or something out of these developers, or are we still on, uh, starting?
So tonight's, tonight's, um, uh, discussion was on the one big development out there. They talked about impact fees, but the impact, the only impact fees we will see is the, um. Man, you guys will know this better. We paid for that, um, drill, that wa- that well out there. So it's what, when, when they add, when every time they add, um, a new house to it, we're gonna get five hundred dollars. They anticipated about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars coming back to the district over the next seven years. So, but that's, if that's, if all the houses fill up, that's a five hundred dollar, um, hookup fee that comes directly to us. For each of those homes. So there's some, there's that. Mr. Little, who's the one that's developing that, they, they, the Littles had donated seventeen acres of the foundation. Um, so that was their, you know, they had done that years ago, I guess.
So the, our, our school foundation has seventeen acres?
Acres, yep. And then.
Where, where are they located? Are they just seventeen somewhere?
It's seventeen acres in, in downtown, well, actually, it's right. It's just a fourth street. It's right, um, next, it's connected, it's landlocked behind White's property. And I'm not sure who has the property off towards Twelfth Street. There's a piece of property, it's right behind Monty.
You can't get to it.
Yeah, you can't get to it. Except for White, so you, you go down the, the canal, may. Really. It's not a great place, you know, for a new elementary school, but, 'cause you got Carberry right there close, but I mean, and Viewview is our future, I guess. But yeah, I think my, my letter to the planning and zoning said that all future developments that are, are large developments need that, need to include. Or should hopefully include land that could be used for a, a neighborhood school. Now, whether, whether they gulf with it, I don't know. But, that's what I asked him.
Thank you.
You're hurt for asking.
Yeah, so before we wrap up, um, I, I want to know when your next meeting is beyond November thirteenth. And are these open to the public meetings?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, 'cause I will then promote them so that you can.
The next meeting is the.
Have been put on.
The week after next week, isn't it?
No, it's the, um.
December fourth? No, no, I think there was one more.
Yeah, but it was the eleventh.
We switched up it every day, yeah.
And you'll be meeting, uh, where?
As of right now, Viewview.
We say the twenty-first?
Twenty-first at six o'clock.
And so the thirteenth?
Is it five to six will be the, and that's not really a meeting, that's gonna be, you know, public input.
It's at five o'clock.
And December fifth is your next one?
And then December fourth is hopefully when they, when they kinda finalize, here's what the, this all looks like.
So we're gonna go from the twenty-first to the fourth.
December eleventh is the.
Cause it Thanksgiving break.
December eleventh is our gonna be.
And. Just dawn on me, we're supposed to be at Shadow View.
For November meeting.
Yes, so that's next week.
November regular board meeting is at Shadow View.
So how are we gonna do the public inputs and the executive session and the regular board meeting?
Executive session, you can go into a classroom.
So I'll talk with Todd and see if I can figure out rooms.
Where, where do you normally run yours? At Shadow View?
We've never, we've never had it at Shadow View.
Is that the meeting on the thirteenth is at Shadow View?
Could, could you move it to a different location just because of all those working parts that come on?
Not just late, you're, you know, 'cause you have to set your dates and your times and all that, it's a re- for a regular board meeting.
We done at the middle school and at Carberry, we did it in the cafeteria. It's not the best sounding when you listen to it or when you're in the public, but in the past, the meetings at the schools have been in the cafeteria.
And we all have mics?
I don't think we have enough in the district.
For the boards, you're, you're, you're plenty. If you got a bunch of people, then you're gonna run into a problem that the board will not need mics.
I think we only have what we've had in the past.
I think we have two.
Two, we have two mics. That's it for the district?
I think so.
Is there a chance that you could move public input to a different date? Because I know that just where it's located in our town, people are probably not gonna be as apt to go out that far, just especially at the timeframe, yeah, five o'clock.
That's too bad.
Can we provide them the opportunity to mail it, to email it to the clerk?
That's up to you guys.
Like as another avenue, if they'd like as a question to answer, they can send it to the board via the clerk and then I can compile a list for the meeting.
I hope it's not the only, like, public opportunities.
Every one of these meetings is an open public.
Right, right.
And they can still bring it to the regular board.
Answer type of thing. I mean, I, in my opinion, I think we need to have these in all of our little, you know, we need to go to these, that we need to go to all the different voting areas and have discussions.
I think that's after the.
After we decide.
After we decide and go out and discuss. No, 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 we got a lot of work.
Here's the easiest option, well, the twenty-first could be the, the public input, you just do that and have the thirteenth. Um, we can just get away with that meeting or we can just come back in for an hour or such, I mean, get away with the thirteenth and come in on the twenty-first for the public input. Um, and have that before the meeting, have it from five to six, and then we grind some things out at six o'clock. That makes more sense.
That makes more sense, okay.
So no more public input, that's five to six.
Our next meeting will be our boarders.
Well, the, the next meeting will be the twenty-first, yeah, for this group.
For this group, yeah.
Or do you have a board?
The board meeting will be at six.
Board meeting will be at six.
At Shadow View.
And it will just be executive session and.
From six to seven, correct, and then the regular board meeting will start at seven.
And then that public input, Terry will be moved to November twenty-first.
So you'll be here at five?
At five, five to six at the district office on the twenty-first.
I thought we canceled that. Twenty-first.
Five to six and then twenty-first. Is then public input. We moved it from next week to the twenty-first.
So currently, this, this.
Because then you don't have to go up to Shadow View, we can make it at the Viewview complex.
So our second session is at six.
Okay, so here's, so facilities to maintain, you will meet on the twenty-first at six o'clock at the Viewview. The next meeting after that will be the December fourth at six o'clock at the Viewview. Board members, you have your regular board meeting at, um, seven, but I need an executive session prior to that at six. On the thirteenth at Shadow View, so we'll keep it all out there, and I'll tell them, oh, that's gonna be tough on tomorrow.
So the twenty-first, we, I'd meet at six, not five.
It's at five for the public input. Five to six for public input.
Public input and then.
And then six to eight.
Forgot about that.
We'll send an email, Terry.
But you don't have another meeting now till the, for twenty-first. This group has a meeting on the twenty-first, or you have a meeting on the thirteenth, Shadow View. Tracy, thanks for coming, thanks for.
Tracy, do you, please?
Uh, she, uh, I think, um.
Did I get it wrong?
Angie, sorry, it's late. She got the right address.
Hey, mine's, mine's wrong again on there too.
Okay, that would be Bill, got it? Bill, you seconding?
On that paper.
I need notes, please. It's from my board. I don't think I need it from you guys. But I need this and any notes.
Do you need this thing here?
I, they're not board members. I can double check with Chrissy, but they're not actual board members, so I don't know, I need notes. Um, I'll bring them to you next week, 'cause I don't have a copy machine.
All I've got on there is leads.
Well, we're gonna send, I'll send an email out to you. I will double check with the rest of you whether or not I need it, so please don't get rid of these just in case. 'Cause I don't think you're technically board members, so I don't think that I have to get from that. It is, it's a work session. Because all of you guys are here, I still have to collect everything. And I can double check from, from the ISBA, but I've been told every board meeting, whether it's a work session, work session.
You were told that the open meeting was.
And I can double, I'm just, I've been.
I just, it just confuses.
I actually have. Okay, thank you. I figured your handwriting out. You left early at the last meeting, do you have notes?
I didn't, I didn't have any.